Good afternoon. We'll, we'll, um, oh, ready? Okay. We'll call this an open session, work meeting into session. We'll have our roll call. Ms. Fraser?
Ms. Matthews?
Here.
Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Mrs. Baker?
Here.
Dr. Kopus?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Thank you. We will have, do we have city council? No city council? So we will, we will go straight into our spotlight and we'll turn it over to Ms. Weisbro.
Hi. Good evening. Welcome to our board meeting tonight. Tonight, we are excited to celebrate and thank a successful community partner. I brought my wingman here, our supervisor of mental health services, to also share with this because she is an integral role of bringing a lot of value to our district and our students here to be able to help go along. So tonight, we would like to thank Ms. Lori Higgins, the president and CEO of Envisions Partnership, as well as Kim Strong Lidle, the director of school and juvenile court programs, and just really celebrate a lot of their successes. Board members, in each of your folders, you have the, you have the complete statistics that go along with this, so you're able to deep dive into the report that they so graciously provided for us. And tonight, I just want to kind of touch base and highlight on a few of those things because just like we were talking at the table with Ms. Lori, they're very much more far-reaching than I think a lot of us here realize what they do. And I think it's very important that we all stand together and just make sure we celebrate those successes here, not only with our kids, but with our Hamilton community. So, last year with this 2024-2025 report, they served 3,575 Hamilton students. This was twice as many students as just three years ago, so you can see that the needs are still continuing to grow. And we're also finding more multiple ways to be able to reach those students. And the more that we reach our students, the more comfortable they feel and word spreads so that they're able to have access to a lot of these programs. They have been consistently serving our district for over 25 years, so a thank you is definitely well-deserved this evening. Every building in Hamilton received at least one service type. They have provided Spanish-language education support in groups in multiple buildings. And all groups and classrooms strive for at least eight sessions. So, at all of our buildings, they'll have Envision educational support groups, and these are for at-risk students focusing on the SEL standards, as well as life skills training focusing on a lot of that curriculum. So, over across the 24-25 year, they had 43 Envision groups and 49 life skills training classrooms. The demographics, which is pretty cool when I'm looking at those on page two, they service, it's pretty, pretty even, male, female, that have access to these groups. So, that's one of the things that jumped out at me right away, that, you know, there's not a stigma or anything when you're talking about these groups. Kids go and they want to share and they want to learn about these valuable resources that they have. They've done a great job of breaking down the statistics when you're looking at both the Envision groups, as well as the life skills groups of, you know, these are our kids talking. When you're talking about, you know, you want that pre-assessment and you want that post-assessment to see what the success was. And these are our students talking about the successes that they received along the way from Envisions and our partnership. And the one that really jumped off the page to me was 94% of students in middle school and high school in the Envision groups, and 95% of students in the elementary groups would recommend these groups to their friends. Guys, that speaks volumes, especially when you're talking about middle school and high school kids, right? They're sharing that with their peers and they're just breaking down those barriers and those walls to say, hey, this has helped me and this is how it's helped me. And it's not scary adults that are leading groups or scary principals that are saying, hey, I'd like you to, to be a part of this. It's their own peers that are saying, hey, look what's helped me. You know, the more that you're able to talk about things that are being successful to them, about what they're experiencing out in our community, the better it serves, better it serves our students. You also have some testimonials that are there at, you know, in, at the end, but I wanted for you guys to share those, you know, in your leisure time. So, tonight, again, you know, we're spotlighting different aspects of, of our community that reaches our Hamilton City School District, and you guys are a very valuable partner and we can't thank you enough.
Hi, guys. Alex Sorrentino, supervisor of mental health. Happy to be here with you all tonight and very grateful to be able to share my gratitude publicly for Envisions and all that they do. They affect our community in a myriad of ways that we don't necessarily see directly within the schools, but they are affecting the greater Hamilton and Butler County area in huge ways that are very important. And I'm incredibly grateful for all the ways that they prioritize our needs here specifically in Hamilton. I'm greedy when it comes to things for our kids and they always meet that, that need when I ask for a little bit more or just one more group for our Spanish-speaking students and things like that. So, we're incredibly grateful to all the services that they provide to us.
Just as a token of thank you, Ms. Higgins and Ms. Strong Lidle, if you don't mind to come up, we just have a small tank token of gratitude and thank you. You can't go wrong with a engraved Yeti cup with our new logo. So, thank you from the bottom of our heart from the Hamilton City School District. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but we're obviously going.
Just want to say hi, Lori. It's good to see you.
Good, good, good.
Thank you.
We're going to have you guys, if it's okay, take a quick pic here.
Here, just scoot your chair.
I just want to say that I so appreciate everything that Envisions, that they do because in fact, I have the, I have the honor to be able to work with them when I first moved back home. And it was so great to be able to work with them and, and be a part of all the amazing things. So, to see them still impacting our kids and to be on this side and see them still impacting, I'm, I was super excited about this and to see all this good information. It's really, it really does my heart well because, again, I'm like you, I'm greedy. I want our kids to have the best, to have everything humanly possible to make them great. So, for me, this was super exciting and I, again, thank you, Ms. Lori, thank you, Ms. Kim, for everything that you do and you put together for our kids, all the hard work. So excited.
I, I don't, I can't do this math real quick off the top of my head. Thirty-five, seventy-five, I think it was the number on there. In the whole county and all of the school districts, and we're in eight out of 10, different times for different reasons, but, you know, that's, and all of the services, like Alex said, you know, we served unduplicated 16,060 individuals across the county, and you can see what your number was. It's not quite 25%, but, you know, it's pretty darn close. So, we do, you know, do a little bit more here, but we have a philosophy of where the need is greatest is where we need to go. We start out every year saying, hey, this is your allotment based on our cost. You'll see the dollar figure that's there, you know, just for the last year of what we've provided free of service by our grant writing, by, you know, the work that we're doing to make this happen for individuals and citizens in our, in our county. So, you know, we're really proud of the work that we do. We're really happy when you're happy. I'm really happy to share these statistics and have somebody actually look at them and see, we really care about outcome. And we, you know, quality continuous improvement is important. Client rights is important. So, you know, we think that, you know, when you see this, that you'll be really, really impressed with, you know, how incredible your kids are. And, you know, they want to be, you know, the best that they can be and we want them to, too.
It's amazing. I mean, that's almost 40-plus percent of our students.
It is.
That's pretty impressive.
How are you doing? It's great. Think of that first meeting we had.
First meeting. So, my, my original, my original meeting. Yep. One, two, three. Was with Ron Patrick. So, that was, so that was. That was my original. SASS. Doing the student assistance. Then it went away. That was back.
I just want to add, Lori, when I was, my tenure at United Way, it was always a pleasure to work with you all and the good work that you, you do. And we, you, as a partner agency, appreciate you.
Yeah, I just want to add on to that. You know, it really does take a village to come together for our kids and to help them overcome and feel connected to the community. I think that's something that your programs really help provide in our schools. And the fact that you see the need and you make sure that financials are not a reason that prevent kids or our school from being able to access that. So, we, we cannot thank you enough for all you do for those kids and beyond that because it just, it continues to multiply. You know, we have a student who feels accepted or, or feels regulated in their emotions. That helps everyone else in the classroom. So, while your direct statistics are impressive, I, that's probably tenfold of the true impact that's happened in our district since you partnered with us. So, thank you so much for that and I look forward to continuing to partner.
All right. Thank you so much. Next on our, then we have our building presentation from Crawford Woods Elementary.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name's Aaron Hopkins. I'm the principal at Crawford Woods Elementary School, and I've been the principal there for 15 years. And when I first started as the principal at Crawford, we had about 20% of our student body was Hispanic, and now we are up to about 50%. So, with those changing demographics, obviously, we want to highlight some of the things we're doing. We have lots of great things to highlight, but today, we are going to focus on our ESL Ambassador Program, which is led by Mr. Connaughton, affectionately known as Mr. C. So, I will not take up any more time. Absolutely.
Imagine a student that enters a classroom for the first time. A new school, a new language, a new country. Beside those who don't understand. Facing lessons they can't access. And doesn't even know how to say hola to his companions. That's the reality of some children who come from another country in Crawford Woods on their first day. No, no, no. It's like that. Thank you.
That's what I was going to check.
That still looks good.
Pictures. All right, and you can one picture at a sleep.
Christian, can you? I cheated. I got my Google out and did it earlier.
Yes. I'm good.
This is amazing, Mr. Connaughton. Thank you.
Okay. So, what we're going to do now is we would like you to go to the conversation mode a minute, and Christian's going to speak for just a moment.
Conversation.
Oh, okay. How do you do that?
Hold on, you guys should share. Just to not take up too much time.
Hi, I'm Christian. My first day in the school, I felt very strange because the teacher spoke English and I didn't understand. I felt very nervous because everyone was doing a classwork and I didn't understand. The iPad made me feel sure I could do the classwork. I am intelligent.
If, you may have noticed, if you're having on conversation mode, anything that is spoken will be translated to English, so you can have a conversation back and forth, English to Spanish, Spanish to English. So, if we tell them to turn and work with a partner, they can participate in the class just like anybody else. Okay? And as you may know, just from being here for just a couple of minutes, when you're thrown into a country and a place where you don't speak any words of the language, we knew that there were some challenges. So, we created the ESL Ambassador Program with four distinct goals. So, so our first goal is to build an inclusive model of teaching, next goal, develop leadership skills, foster service to the school and community, and provide trips and experiences. So, the first thing that we wanted to do is really work towards an inclusive model of teaching. And when I say that, if you are a newcomer, someone who's just arrived in the country, you're going to be in the class and we want you to be able to engage. Engagement is our number-one rule. We want every kid to feel like they're doing something from the minute they get there, rather than just sitting and listening. So, the teachers and I have really worked hard to create lessons, and we do these, I would say, we have one a week and then little ones each day. But, giving example, this is Christian. He's a newcomer and he's dressed up, newcomer, I mean, they just got into the country. So, he was new to the country last year. He's dressed up as a patriot and he was a tax collector. Now, he didn't understand everything that was going on, but he had to go around and collect everybody's M&amp;M's, which were their taxes. And you could hear all the groans in the room. So, you can just imagine, like, the kids might not have understood everything, but they don't, they know the taxes aren't great, you know? So, here's another one is, we had built certain activities where they were doing Jackie Robinson, and they had to, we had words on the floor, and they had to physically jump over these words, like discrimination and other things. So, even our newcomers, they're seeing that word discrimination, they're having to jump over it, and they're making that connection. Some kids may read it in a book, but these kids might get it that way. Another one that they did is, and this is Joshua, he's only been in the country two or three years, but he was leading the activity at that point, and he was doing a puzzle for a book, it was called Esperanza Rising, where they were having to put pieces of the puzzle together to kind of understand the story a little bit better. And another one, this one probably looks like the most boring picture because what you see is kids sitting in a room, kind of like we are right here, and they're all working on a close reading. But if you look a little bit closer, you're going to see the magic of some of the things that they're doing. You're going to see three different kids and they have iPads. And they're doing the same thing that everybody else is. They're able to read, they're able to engage, they're able to do lots of things. And I'll give you a quick story. We had a girl who came in who was illiterate in her own language. And we, this was the first year of the iPads, about three years ago, and she was in class and she wasn't doing anything. We were trying to get her to communicate, but she had speech impediment and different things, and we just kept thinking, like, how much does she really know? And at one point, I brought in the iPad, I showed her how to do it, and almost immediately, she was listening to the teacher. She had that conversation going. She was able to hear everything the teacher was going, and on the first day, she was putting her hand up to answer questions. And that's what we want. We want that girl to not sit there, not doing anything. We want her to engage. And the last one is, this is going to be Valeria.
Steve Christa. Passion should be fun. Thank you.
So, we were working on a book, and she's only been in the country about a month and a half. Very quiet, those kind of things, but we were helping her learn different characters of the story, and what she did was, they had to come up with the dress of that character, they had to act like that character and do different things. And what happened was, like, all of a sudden, she comes out of her shell. It's just giving these opportunities for them to kind of shine. Did she understand everything in the book? No, but she, the way she was dressed, I mean, we were all impressed because even the stripes on her thing had meaning on her shirt. Okay. So, the next thing that we've done is we created leadership retreats for our kids. And we go out to Camp Kimmel Guard, and it's, everything that we're doing is activities to help them work as a team. So, we concentrate on four things. Communication, we, communication, service, leadership, and, which one am I missing here? Leadership, oh, oh, confidence. Sorry, I had to know which one of the, because they're all. So, a lot of the things that they do, they're built around, like, this team is trying to get from one island to the another. They're working as a team, they're trying to do that. And then the, the most important part is our process afterward, talking through these things. The next one is, this happened to be a Sherpa hike, so you've got half the kids who are blindfolded and the other half are Sherpas, leading them through the woods, but they can't touch them and they can't speak that language. So, it's all, how do we build communication, those kind of things. Next one was, they had to go out and build forts, so kind of, how would they survive? And then the last one, I love this one because it features Neftali here, and his group had to get everybody through a porthole. So, he was working really hard, they were all working hard, but they were kind of, they just, it just wasn't happening. You know, they were kind of fighting about how they were going to do it. And then, but if you notice here, every kid is focused on Neftali. That communication was starting to happen, and that's what we want, whether you can speak the language or not. So, it always ends with one big event, and one of the events is the zip line that they do, trying to build the confidence. But our fourth graders go canoeing. So, they go up the river and do those kind of things. So, we try and, you know, bring them as much confidence as we can and work as, now I'm going to pass my microphone over.
Hi, I'm Dulce. Nice to meet you. We've enjoyed working together. We've worked together in teams. We've learned from each other. It's been a beautiful day and I am a leader.
I'm not sure if you got a chance to translate, but she talked about the different events and things like that. So, she's able to communicate and she also does a fantastic job with her English as well. So, the next thing we do after those retreats is, we've always thought that something powerful is, often our kids who come for the first time, we think, well, they, we have to translate for them, we have to do lots of things, it's a lot of work. But what we want them to do is feel like they're empowered because they have a lot to give to. And for me, there's nothing more important than us serving. When you get, that's probably the highest level for me, is when you can serve somebody else. And from even the first couple of weeks, they have opportunities to serve. So, some of the things that we've done, we do little buddy programs. If they speak Spanish, sometimes that happens in Spanish, sometimes it happens in English. We also, this year, we had a welcome bag, so they, all these guys created welcome bags and they delivered them to anybody who was new to the country. And the other thing is, we have a Hispanic Heritage Festival. It's October 9th, if anybody wants to come for a great party. But they help with the behind-the-scenes things, but they also help run some of the booths and stations. And they all, we've done community service, not because we had to, but because we wanted to. But the community service, like, they were working, this, the example there was, they were the registration table at the Easter egg hunt downtown Hamilton. And there were, they were the only Spanish speakers there. They were valuable. And finally, it's, right now, we're in the month of Hispanic Heritage, so we're kind of excited about that. And I've got one person who's going to come up.
Hi, my name is Sophia, and last year, I was a big buddy for Ada and Abby in kindergarten in Ms. Mills' class. We read books together and helped them with the words that they were learning. I love meeting with them because it reminded me of when I first got here and I love being a good example for them. This year, the ESL Ambassador made welcome bags with Taki's candy and school supplies in specials bag. They seem a little scared, but now we can be friendly faces with them and we can talk to each other.
All right. Thank you. So, one of the other things that we've done is, we've been doing lots of different field trips throughout the school. Last year, we did, I believe, four of them, and this year, we're moving it to six. What we want them to do is get to know their city. And one of the things that we did was, we went and met the mayor, we went into Hamilton City Chambers, which was great. They went to our space and David Stark took us around, they got to know them. And we also went to Rensselaer Park, and at Rensselaer Park, I mean, they found anything from large lizards to frogs to snakes to all sorts of things. But it was awesome because some of them have never touched a frog before, and just getting out and seeing, you know, Rensselaer, which is so close, such a beautiful spot that we could do. So, let's, Neftali is going to talk. One of the things that they allowed us to do was, the mayor, when the ambassadors came, he invited us back to go to the dedication of the FC soccer field. So, that was nice.
Hi, my name is Tali. Last year, being ESL Ambassador was really fun because we got to go on many trips. Those trips helped me grow and build character. They also made me realize that I actually explore my city and environment more. One of the coolest things was getting to meet the mayor and ask him questions. I couldn't believe how much the money, how much the city spends on, I forgot.
I think he said, how much money the city spends.
Yeah, how much money the city spends. I could, I also got to go to the dedication of the FC soccer field. The program taught me how to be more respectful and responsible. And the best part, I even got to go and meet and play with the FCC soccer players.
So, and I have to kind of backtrack for a second. The, the program has been funded through the, the higher grant through Hamilton Community Foundation. It's been funded by the Rotary Club, it's been funded by T-Sol in Ohio, and it's been funded by the Learning Links Grant in Cincinnati. So, if anybody knows of a big donor, so we don't have to keep writing grants, that would be awesome. But, you know, so, it's kind of built, each year, it's been building, and that's our goal is to continue to expand it. And I also, you know, as I'm doing that, thanking them because of Hamilton Community Foundation is amazing, but also Aaron and Sue, who just kind of inspire you to try new things and get out there and do that, you know? So, really, a lot of that credit goes to them. So, you know, as we build this program, the, the biggest thing that we want to do is know that it's more than just learning English. We want kids to belong, we want them to lead, and we want them to serve. We want that to be a lot of what they do. One, in our first year, to kind of finish what I consider the power of this, we had a kid, almost like the girl who needed the iPad, and he was struggling as well throughout the year. I mean, we were using all kinds of things to really help him engage in things like this, but he missed home. He had a lot of different, you know, just things going on. And I went down to the little buddy program and I kind of was checking in on everybody, and he was in the corner of the room, and he had two kids sitting on his lap and he, one kid draped over his shoulders, and you just think, that's what it's about. You know, that kid who wasn't able to communicate a lot of the year, now is communicating his love to everybody else. So, to kind of conclude.
Confidence. I have confidence.
Leadership. I am a leader.
Service. I like to serve.
Communication. I can communicate.
And if anybody ever wants to come over to Crawford, we'd love to have you. If you want to come into our classroom, if you want to come to one of our events, we'd love to have you because I, this is just an awesome experience for them to see you guys and get to meet you guys because we think that's important. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. C, for bringing the group over, Mr. Hopkins and staff. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you, students, for your brave, being, being here with us, definitely super excited. This is, this is cool.
we had a kid almost like the girl who needed the iPad and he was struggling as well throughout the year. I mean, we were using all kinds of things to really help him engage in things like this, but he missed home. He had a lot of different, you know, just things going on. And I went down to the little buddy program and I kind of was checking in on everybody. And he was in the corner of the room and he had two kids sitting on his lap and he, one kid draped over his shoulders. And you just think, that's what it's about, you know? That kid who wasn't able to communicate a lot of the year, now is communicating his love to everybody else. So to kind of conclude.
Confidence, I have confidence.
Leadership, I am a leader.
Service, I like to serve.
Communication, I can communicate.
And if anybody ever wants to come over to Crawford, we'd love to have you. If you want to come into our classroom, if you want to come to one of our events, we'd love to have you because I, this is just an awesome experience for them to see you guys and get to meet you guys because we think that's important. So thanks.
Thank you, Mr. C, for bringing the group over, Mr. Hopkins and staff. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you students for your brave, being, being here with us, definitely super excited. This is, this is cool.
And that's only a fraction.
Yeah, this is super cool.
How many of these we have in the district?
You know, that's interesting. We have, at Crawford, we now are up to 27. And when I was talking to the community foundation, you know, kind of you're asking for money or whatever, somebody asked me like, well, what if we gave you 20,000 or whatever? And I was thinking, this would be awesome, this is a good time to say, yeah, I want the money. But I was like, our goal is to get them off of those iPads as soon as possible. You know, so we don't, even though it sounds great, like let's get as many as we can, we really want to focus in on who needs them and how long do we want them to have them? Because, you know, it's awesome to get them engaged, but we also want them to learn English. That's what, that's what we do, you know?
Well, I know Google has translator.
Yes.
Because I've been using that when I'm in Europe. I mean, I feel for a lot of these kids and Andrea and I have had long discussions about ELS, or ESL, sorry. I mean, how scary that is for a student to sit in a classroom and sit there and not know what's going on, not understand anything. And that can, that frustration can turn into discipline problems. And what you're doing is alleviating those problems and helping these children get where they need to be. And I'd like to see this on, you know, a district-wide basis to help, because our numbers of English second language is growing every year.
For sure.
And we need, we need to do something that these kids can, you know, pick up the language a little bit quicker. And this kind of program that you have, these iPads and what you're doing with that is, you know, helping do that. We need to do that on a district level.
Thanks, and I think you're right because one thing I've noticed is, once they can engage and they're doing a lot of these things, they're starting to learn and with that learning, that's when the joy comes, you know, and.
I want to say, Principal Hopkins and Mr. Connington and to the students, thank you so very much. And I actually had a recent conversation with Mrs. Blevins about this and I was asking her to convince me that inclusion was in fact the best way to, to help these students assimilate. And your presentation this afternoon really went a long way to convincing me that, yeah, it probably is. So thank you very much.
Yeah.
Steve, I.
Go ahead.
Okay. Just want to thank you for all your work on this. How are students selected into, is it the ambassador program, is that a?
We're very selective. If you happen to be an ASL student, you're in.
Oh, okay.
Whether you like it or not.
That takes care of all the paperwork right there then, I don't have to worry about paperwork, okay. What I really, I mean, I think this is a great tool for you to move these students forward. I just think about how things have changed over the years and how with AI and the new, I heard about the new earbuds today and how they, that's an incredible thing of 17 languages translating. But anyway, I just, I just think it's wonderful that they have had the opportunity to go see our city and to reach out. Too many of our kids, and it's not just ESO, are just, they know their little neighborhood and they don't understand the bigger, what Hamilton really is, or even this region of the state is. And having them have that opportunity, I think is just a wonderful thing. So thank you for your hard work, kids, thank you so much for standing up here. It is scary, but I see that you have one thing very, very prominently and it's confidence. And thank you very much for sharing that with us.
Okay, well, I'm going to try, I'm going to butcher the Spanish since I've been trying to learn this. So I may have to come over and work with your students. No, 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 me encanta este programa, estudiantes muy bien.
And Mr. C, Mr. Hopkins and to our students, I just want to say thank you. When students feel a part of a community similar to what, you know, I shared before, it makes all the world the difference. And, you know, the, the beauty of our school district is our diversity and the ability to learn from each other. And what I think is so amazing is this program helps to create that exposure. I love to hear, to our first gentleman, when you said, I am confident, you smiled, you stood up straight. And that is so important because it is scary when you come in and can't communicate or don't understand what's going on. So this program is phenomenal. I appreciate all of our community partners that make that happen and I just, I'm so proud of you. To each of our students, we do have a little gift on your way out, just a little bracelet that talks about that you are really showing what it means to be the Hamilton way. You are showing that we are kind, we are leaders, and we help people to thrive here in this community. So thank you for being those ambassadors at Crawford, but also for our district. And you did an excellent job tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
That was pretty cool. But I see what they're saying, like, to have them all and to give, you know, issue one to every student would be cool. But I see what they're saying, the ultimate goal is to get all, but it's cool to have for those that are just really struggling though.
Well, Lauren was talking about, because we just bought some, they have earbuds now.
Oh, I've seen that.
Like 27. I'm thinking, you know, Apple, if we went to them and said, hey.
I'm, like the donor, that, no, that would be like super cool to get on that, I'm sure they do.
Thank you.
Hey Steve, you want these, you want these back?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. So we.
Thank you. Oh, thank you very much.
Nice. Thank you all so much, thank you. Nice to meet you as well, thank you. Oh yeah, she's, she's going to be here one day, sitting here. Oh yeah. All right, next on our agenda, we have a presentation for our Ohio State Report Card presentation.
I'll take this off as well. I like to move a little bit when I communicate. First, I want to say thank you for having us here tonight. We're excited to share our report card with you. I think we have lots of things to celebrate, just looking at trends over the last five years and, and being able to show the hard work that our teachers are doing every day for our students. So I'm going to talk a little bit in the beginning. My name is Julie Arnold, I'm the Executive Director of Pre-K 12. I also have Carla Castater with me, who will be talking specifically about elementary because she's the Director of Pre-K 6. And we have Jeremiah Henson, who oversees secondary and he will share some data for 712. As I go through this, I'm going to try to give you the gist, like the big picture, without going too far in the weeds. Always happy to meet with you and dig in further if you wanted to learn more about any of these components. To begin with, the report card has changed a little bit this year. In the past, we had five components that were graded and this year we have six. So with that, the state had to do some adjusting on the ratio of how they're going to weight those components. They did keep intact the fact that achievement and progress remain double everything else. But we have a new component called the CCWM, which is looking at our high school students exiting the high school and how ready they are for college, a career, workforce, matil, or the military. So that's the new component that was not previously on the report card. So you really cannot compare apples to apples, but it does give you an idea of, as I go through today, I'll be able to talk about the things that are apples to apples and how this impacted the report card specifically. Our overall rating was a three. On each of these pages, when I go over the components and the overall report card, I'm going to show you where we're at in that range because I think that's important for you guys to see. Saying that we're a three can mean a lot of things. We can be on the low end of that range, we could be in the middle of that range, we can be at the high end of that range. We are a 2.531. The range starts at 2.125 and it tops out at 2.624. So we are on the high range of that three component. Last year we were a three and a half star. I'll get into the details of why that shifted this year. District achievement, remember that achievement and progress, and progress really means student growth. So if we're looking at district achievement, this is how well our students are achieving overall. We are currently a three. To be in the three, you have to be between 70% and 80%. We are 70 and nine tenths of a percent, which is a little bit higher than where we were last year. We were also a three last year, we were just 70 point, I can't remember the exact number, but just a little bit less than 70.9. This is looking at the specifics of where our kids fall, whether they're advanced, accomplished, proficient, basic, limited, and untested. And I'll talk about how that impacts our overall score. We also have a category called Advanced Plus. Those are for students who, let's say that we have a student in third grade who excels in math. And so they advance into fourth grade math while staying a third grade student. Or they may totally grade accelerate. If those students score proficient, their score for us would actually be accomplished. So those students who have advanced a grade or advanced a subject, they are considered an Advanced Plus student. That's the breakdown. The middle column is the points that we receive per category. And then on the, the first column for percent of students is showing you how our students are shaking out in those categories. I put the arrows over here because I'm a data maniac. And so when we're working with our buildings, we're always talking about ways that we dig into this data. We know the data better and we respond to what the data is telling us. So this data is telling us, we get a lot of bang for our buck if we move students from untested to even limited. So currently we have 88 students who did not test, so we got zero points for them. If those students would have come in and tested and even performed at the limited level, we would have gotten a higher score for them, okay? And the state does that, so you can't, no district can purposely have students stay home during a testing period to make their scores look better. You get penalized for every student who does not test.
Julie, can I ask, why, why would a student not test? Is that a parental decision or?
It could be, they could be opted out. That's not really our biggest issue. It could be they're out of the country. It could be they're suspended. We are able to bring them back in and have them tested and we've talked about some ways we could do that. It could just be chronic absenteeism.
Okay, thank you.
Our principals do get a breakdown of who those students are to, to know if they're in their building and what they can do to, to help increase the likelihood of them being present for that test. The next few slides are going to take you through how our achievement looks when compared to similar schools and to the state. We are the blue bar. Green are our most similar schools, the 20 most similar, and the gray is the whole state. So as you go through here, it's going to be math on the left, ELA on the right, until science appears at fifth, eighth, and biology. You're going to notice a trend. We consistently outperform students or school districts that have the same demographics that we do. Like, in a very strong manner, we outperform them. Our goal, and it has been, and we've been talking to principals about this since I've been here, probably even before, is we want to exceed the state. At sixth grade, seventh, eighth, and now science is on the left. And then that breaks down all of our tested subjects at the high school level. Algebra is doing an outstanding job, they do surpass the state. I also believe geometry surpasses the state. Our math, you're going to notice, is doing very well district-wide and I'll talk about that in more detail as I move along. The next component is progress. So this is looking at a three-year trend of how our students are growing. The most current year counts double the two years prior to that, okay? So when we're looking at this, we are a four-star district. So that says to us, our students are growing more than what the state even expects them to, okay? A three would be expected and we're doing, we're showing evidence that we're growing more than expected. This has two components, there's a growth index and an effect size. And it's really comparing, do we have a lot of data showing that multiple students are growing? And then how does that compare to what the state is doing? If you look at multiple students growing, really we have, anything over a two is good and we're a 2.97. So that's where we're exceeding what's expected. If that was below a two, we, anything between zero and two would be what the state expects. And then the point zero two is really showing, is our growth greatly different than everyone else across the state. We're a little higher than expected, but not greatly higher. This breaks down the subjects of how students are growing. We really want to see green, light blue, and dark blue. Gray just means it wasn't tested, so that doesn't really have any impact. If they're yellow, it's a little bit below what's expected. If it's red or the burgundy color, it's significantly low. There's significant evidence that we're not growing that group of students enough. So that gives a breakdown of English, Language Arts, Math, Science, and then they do an average of all tests together per the grade level. And then the bottom row is all high school. Next component is early literacy. Early literacy has three measures inside the component. It looks at how many students are proficient. So when they take the test, how many of them got a 700? Right now, that weighs 40% of this measure. So they're considering that the most important component or measure in this component. The next one is promotion to fourth grade. Now, the state has a law that we're allowed to promote students who don't meet the proficiency score if the parents choose to promote them. Our students who didn't make the proficiency score, nearly all of our parents chose to promote them anyhow. Now, we don't just promote them, we promote them, they're on a ramp, there is an intensive intervention plan so that we can prove that we're continuing to try to get them to that proficient level. That counts 35%. And then improving literacy is really looking at K3 and how our students are doing to get closer to being on track, okay? This is a breakdown of how we got a 62.6. I'm going to go back real quickly. 62.6, the range for a two is 58 to 68. So we're about right in the middle. Carla's going to talk a little bit more about things that are happening at that grade level that we're doing to address that. So there's the breakdown. Improving literacy, if you look at that, we fell a little bit off from last year. A lot of that is, in my opinion, we are changing things. We're moving from our balanced literacy to structured literacy and that's impacting them the most. But that gives you the breakdown of how that component is measured.
Julie.
Yes.
When you talk about that, is that the science of reading that?
Yes.
Different, okay, thank you.
The science of reading is like the theory behind, structured literacy is the practice that you do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Gap closing, gap closing ties in a little bit with progress, but gap closing goes one step further. They don't just look at how the masses are performing and growing. They look at what are called student groups, used to be called subgroups. If you were a teacher prior to this, you would have used the term subgroups. Those are the student groups on the bottom left-hand corner. If there are 15 kids in any one of those categories in our district or in our schools, they get counted. they get counted as a student group for the measure. Now, the kicker is, we can have 1,000 all students, I'm just making up a number, and 15 Hispanic students, and they count the exact same. Okay? They're all the same weight regardless of how many kids are in there. That's the state way of saying, are you meeting the needs of your diverse community? They can count multiple groups. So for instance, we could have, everybody's in all students. So you could be a student who's Hispanic, who's an English learner, who has a disability, a learning disability, and be economically disadvantaged and fall in all five of those categories. And so if that one student doesn't perform well on the assessment, it hurts us in five different categories. But the other is true, too. If they do do well, they help us in all five of those categories. Okay? On the right-hand side, well, I'll back up. One thing that we're doing, I'm currently going around with principals because after we go over the data, a lot of them will say, let's break it down further. And I love them for that because they just want to dig in. So as we're going around, the first two I've met with this week, we're going through and saying, let's put names to these. Who's in these groups? Where are they at? Let's use their map data. Let's figure out what we can do, you know, to close those gaps and show movement in their learning. Okay? Over here on the right-hand side is a breakdown of all the things that go into gap closing. So they look at ELA achievement, math achievement, ELA growth, math growth, graduation, English language learners, chronic absenteeism, gifted performance indicator, which is gifted progress, growth, gifted performance, achievement. Have we identified students? And if so, are we servicing them? That's another one. And it gives us the breakdown. This is complicated, it really is. But the more we know about this, the more we can respond to what we need to do to show our students success. Let me back up there. We got a 44.9. We were one tenth of a percent away from being a four. Like, literally, you can't miss it by less than that.
I will add that if that point would have been there, that would have kept us at that three and a half stars.
Really?
So that one measure, one tenth of a percentage point, kept us there. And with the new measure being added, I mean, there's other factors. But that right there, when you look at, you know, is the quality of Hamilton City Schools going down? No. This was by the thinnest of margins.
Yes, actually, when you look into these ranges, we have moved within the ranges in a positive manner in nearly every single thing.
Of course, they change every year. I mean, oh, well.
Yeah. But that's, those are the, those are the things we need to do.
Yeah, let's keep moving that.
Yeah. As leaders, we need to dig in there. And it's like, yes, it's a three, but what is that three telling us? And so we dig in there and we find a lot of wins.
It sounds like we have a dysfunctional state.
I did not say that.
I wasn't going to go there.
They add, they add new criteria. How are you supposed to judge year by year? If it's a moving target? And I guess, one question I was going to ask you at the end. All we're seeing here, do these voucher schools, you know, the charter schools and the parochial schools, do they have to go through all this?
They do not.
So they get the same amount of money per student that we get?
More.
Or more? And they don't have to buy by this?
Right.
All right.
And our targets continue to move on this. So these aren't static.
That's why I say dysfunctional.
Yeah. I mean, it really, the, what each of these subgroups have to perform changes every year. So in order for us to get the points for each of these subgroups, it's not the same number. So what we had to get this year, it will go up by two and something, two and change percent next year. So it, even if we are overperforming, the line of what they consider in order to, to get your points continues to just.
It moves.
Yeah, and, and just to that point, I mean, I think that, I truly think that it's a right of a parent to make their choice of where their kid goes, but they have to be measured the same way as us. That's the only thing. That is just such a disservice to the public school systems.
It truly is.
Julie, one thing you mentioned early in your presentation, I believe, was apples to apples. And the thing that impresses me the most and what I really focus on is how we compare to our 20 most similar districts in terms of demographics. And it's very impressive how we have consistently outperformed them. I mean, it's, it's not by a little bit. It's substantial, so.
Right. It's to the point that, you know, when, I know it's happened to Andrea. It happened to Alex when she was at one of the county meetings where people have approached and said, what are you doing? You know? And there are some areas, we, we could still show some improvement, and I'll show you a couple of those. And my question is, what are they doing? You know? If they're getting there with their English language learners, what can we tap into? Gap closing. I just did math and reading specifically in detail for you so that you could get an idea. So this shows you how they broke down the student groups. It shows you how many students are in each group. So you can see at the top on the left-hand corner, the American Indian and Alaskan native was a five. So there's an NC there, didn't count. We didn't have 15 kids. But anything that's over 15, or at least 15 or greater, the highlighted column shows you who hit the target. Just to the right of that was the goal. And like Andrea said, that goal changes each year. They keep raising the bar so that we'll raise the bar. Then if you go across, that is, the left was achievement, the right is growth. So in math, we look pretty solid this year. But remember, the growth is a three-year trend. We did really well this year. That's the score that counted the most of the three years. This is going to count half of what we do next year, and the target will be higher next year.
I hate to keep interrupting you.
You're fine.
I had to come up with another question. When we, when I look at, at the English, the ELA, English language achievement, I'm assuming, yes. The fact that we continue to have more and more non-English speaking students is affecting that number, correct?
It is, yes. I will tell you, though, if you look up at math, it's a more universal language.
Yeah.
And we, we do great with those students. We hit our achievement mark and we hit our growth mark.
That, that was the.
But you're going to see the difference.
Yeah, you can.
In language arts because of the language barrier.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. I'm not going to go through the whole ELA. I can if you want me to, but it's the same. Graduation, we are a two. We missed it by six tenths of a percent. That is, if you put the high school and the Miami school together, it's the combination of the two. We'll do breakdowns of the buildings after I'm finished. We were an 89.4. If we would have hit 90, we would have been an overall three. So again, missed it by the skin of our teeth. The two measures are, do students graduate in four years? Do they graduate in five years?
Julie, do you know what the state average is?
State average of graduation?
Yes.
I do not. Do you know?
No.
Oh, I thought you were going to tell me.
Oh, I don't know, but I, that's got to be right, yeah.
Yeah, we'll pull it up right here.
I'll give you the breakdown of Butler County so you can see where everybody shook out in these different ranges. We're not far off from the top in any of the measures. So you'll get to see that as well. And that's not even comparing apples to apples. Middletown is in there, and this year, they are our most similar school district, according to the state of Ohio.
Julie, on the, does this still, this still take into consideration students who are in special needs that are staying till they're 21? Or is this, or has that been? Because at some point, I thought the students that are staying longer.
So that's where the state and the federal government are actually in disagreement with each other. We still get penalized for those students that defer graduation. That is factored in that they are a, because their number is still a part of the denominator, but not the numerator because they haven't graduated.
Yeah.
We do it because it's what's right by kids. But those are considered non-graduates in that cohort.
The federal government said they can stay, but we get penalized.
Because the federal government allows them to defer graduation until 21. But the state of Ohio measures, do they get in or out in four and five years?
At least that's consistent from district to district. Yeah.
Still.
Yes.
It breaks us down.
Right. This is the CCWMR, which is College Career, Workforce, and Military. This is the new measure that's been sitting there as report-only for a couple of years. We have shown an uptick in this each year. We are a two-star. We are 54.6. The range is 53 to 63. This is the breakdown of the different ways students can reach this measure. And they all have to reach it in some way. But it really is just measuring, are our students ready to go to college? Are they ready to go out to a career? Or are they enlisting in the military once they leave Hamilton?
I mean, how can we tell? I mean, we can say if a kid's in high school, hey, I joined the military. But how does, how is that?
We have to track that. We have to, we have to get proof to show that they moved on to, like, if they go to the military, we have to find what their next, that's for pathways. But this is really just showing that they met the measure. So did they take the ACT or, and get a 21 or greater? Yes, check. Did they take AP honors course successfully? Check. So they have to do things while they're with us to show that we're preparing them for the future.
And it seems a lot of work.
And then Lauren Postgraduate, we're required by the state.
Yes.
We do a year-out survey, and we have to collect that information, get it through EMIS, and we have to report that to the state. And that's how we know and determine where they're at a year out after graduation.
What's your response to that?
It's actually very good. We've done a really good job, and I'll give kudos to our high school and to our EMIS staff. They've created that survey. They've collected emails, phone numbers at graduation. That's what they've done. That's actually how they've done this, to make sure that we have that information so that a year out, we can communicate with those students and get that information back.
Okay. That's great. I mean, I, I had no idea, but it seems like it's a boatload of work.
Two pieces.
It is a lot of tracking.
What's interesting on there, because when I first saw the CCWMR come out, I knew we had a larger percent of students who were going into the military or things like that. Kids can only count in one category. So if they hit, they took an honors class, that might not be a true representation of the number of our kids that are going on to serve in the military or anywhere else. Once they hit one category, that's the only place they can count. I also, just Dr. Copus, we pulled it up. It is 88.3 is the state average, similar, or for graduation, a four-year graduation rate. Similar districts are 82.4. So we are right on state average with what that is, which is interesting because the state codes that as a two.
Yeah. That's impressive.
Yeah. We're above that, yeah.
Yeah, I think when we put our two high schools together, the Miami school and freshman building and high school serve the same IRN, they count the same. That's why the five drops to a two. Okay? That's the breakdowns that I went over with you before. Here's the shakeout of the trends of how we have progressed. Across the report cards, you can see where they went from letter grades to stars. And that gives you the breakdown of our categories. And like I said, gap closing, we missed by one tenth of a percent. Or, excuse me. Yeah. It was gap closing. And then the graduation, we missed by six tenths of a percent. So we were actually further along in the graduation than we were last year at this time. And Carla's going to talk about elementary.
All right. I want to start, first of all, by just saying how proud I am of all of our elementary buildings because we have worked really hard to get state-approved, high-quality curriculum in our classrooms with our teachers. And it is showing that we're holding steady. And we haven't seen a drop with starting new curriculum, which often happens in schools. When they start a new curriculum, it's hard. It takes a lot for the teachers to get used to the new curriculum. And we have not seen huge drops from that. So I just am very excited to see that we're holding steady. And I think we're going to just continue to grow as we become even better at our explicit instruction and our fidelity within the curriculum and providing our students what they need. So as you can see, this is how we get our report card overall calculations. We have achievement for 33.3%, progress for 33.33%, gap closing for 16.66%, and then we have early literacy for the 16.66%. Here are how our buildings stack up. You see a comparison from 2017-18 school year to the 24-25 school year. All of our buildings are meeting or exceeding the state standards. All of our elementary buildings are meeting or exceeding the state standards.
Yes.
You can take a look. This is going to break it down by building. I won't go specifically through every piece of information on there for sake of time. But this is Bridgeport, meeting state standards, and they remained a three-star dis, or building. Brookwood is meeting state standards. They're colored a blue because they're a 3.5, so they're real close to getting to that four. And you can see their tracks from, throughout the years. Crawford Woods, three stars, meeting state standards as well. You saw some great examples of things that are happening in that building. I've been in a classroom where Mr. C was working with our literacy curriculum, which was a lot of the examples you saw on that screen, and it's amazing to see. Fairwood is at a three-star. They went up from a 2.5 star to be meeting state of standards, so we are very excited for them. Yes, they did. Highland, three stars for meet state standards. Linden is three stars, and they're also meeting state standards. Ridgeway, four and a half stars. They maintained their four and a half stars, and they are exceeding state standards. Yes. So with the early literacy, they did go from a two-star to a four-star, or from a four-star to a two-star. And the reason being is, they had one piece of that, which was that improving the K to two literacy, that they did not have to count previously because you don't have to count that piece of that score if you have more than 90% of your kindergarteners that come into school on track. So the way we, it's judged is how kids start at the beginning of a school year, if they're on track or off track based on our reading diagnostics. And then we look at them the following fall, and we see, are they on track? Or are they off track the following fall? So we, they look at who was off track and were we able to move them to on track? Or who was off track? And did they stay off track or vice versa? Ridgeway previously did not have to count a piece of that early literacy score because their kindergarteners, more than 90% came in on track. So when you get that score, part of the early literacy score doesn't count. And they get to use that proficiency, the third-grade proficiency, and the promotion to fourth grade, which are two easier ones that we hit rather than that K to two improving literacy score.
I also do think it's important, especially tonight with talking about our ESL population. We opened ESL as a unit at Ridgeway. So we have more students included that are, you know, learning the language in kindergarten, first, second, third grade. Not that that's the whole piece of that. But we, when we are looking at data, those numbers are what you're seeing. But we want to understand everything behind those numbers. What are the factors? If we pull this lever, what does that do? You know, really understanding, when Julie says she's a data maniac, I think she's been on this every single day since they came out. And that is for us to understand the numbers. Yes, the numbers are a celebration or a, a point of growth for us, but it's more about understanding what goes into the numbers to make sure we're supporting kids in the appropriate way.
I think it's also important, important to say that our buildings are really looking within those ranges for the big wins that we have because sometimes they don't show when the stars come out. So like, with that early literacy score, we have RIMPs, reading improvement monitoring plans. We have kids that are on those, and that factors into that score. But we have kids that will start down here, and they'll grow all the way up to here. But guess what? They have to get right here to get off that RIMP. And so then we don't get that little point of credit for that student. But we know that those kids have grown so much, and we're so proud of that. But then it just doesn't always show right there. And all the buildings are really digging into, where can they find those little wins that we can just push it a little bit further to help those kids grow just a little bit more? And we have Riverview, who was three stars and meets state standards. So I'm going to hand it over to Jeremiah for the middle school and high school.
Thank you, thank you. So good evening, everyone. Before I get started, I want to apologize. I love my team. I noticed they sat on that end. I sat way, way down there on the other end. And that is because if I sat in the middle, there's something about that projector light and my hair collar. This doesn't mesh. So nothing personal, Julie and Carla. All right. So a quick test for the board. The elementary had four big components of the report card. The elementary had four big components of the report card. We have, at the middle school level, only three that are forty percent, forty percent, and twenty percent. Do you remember which one would be missing?
Jeremiah, I know that answer. It is early literacy.
Well done. Ding ding ding. All right, so taking a look at those, Garfield, overall, two-and-a-half stars. Seventeen eighteen, they were at a D. And Wilson, seventeen eighteen, UCB, and twenty-four twenty-five, four stars. Garfield Middle School, so you see a lot of kind of maintaining the achievement level, progress going up and sliding back a little bit, gap closing. Here's what I can say about here at Hamilton. The report card data, and it's very refreshing to work with a team like Andrea and Julie and Carla, because she does not use this as a gotcha. It's more of a, hey, what can we find to improve? And you ever heard the story about her arrow story? Right? If you've heard the arrow story, she really uses this data as a lot of sets of data to say, okay, what can we find in here to really bump you up to the next level? So that's very, very refreshing. So we're at two-and-a-half stars, but here's the thing, I know because Andrea's met with them, Julie's met with them, the next day I get a call, and Josh is like, hey, can you help me out here? I want to do some things with my BLT. We know exactly why he went down to two-and-a-half stars. It's part of that gap closing component, specifically the gifted component in there. So we know exactly where to pinpoint and where to go. And in fact, grade seven through twelve, all of them, they're creating plans with their building leadership teams, called a One Team One Goal Plan. They're setting goals, all based on this, and we have action steps that we're going to follow through with. And I'm actually doing some training next week with the BLTs to help them follow through on these plans based on this data. So it can be disappointing in some places, but inspiring, but we can also use it to do some good things. So Wilson Middle School, looking great. You can see they continue to rise, and then a little bit of a dip. Been twenty-four twenty-five, back to four stars, exceeding state standards. The high school in Miami School, we don't have the early literacy on there anymore, but we have added graduation rate in CCWMR. The CCWMR component, once again, new. One thing to clarify with that, and don't hear this as an excuse, all of our students can graduate, meet all their graduation requirements, and not get any of those things on there at all. So it's really more about our programming. We could look at that negatively, but in a way, this is inspiring to me, because now it's pushing us to say, okay, what kind of programming can we give our kiddos who aren't going to college? What kind of vision can we give them about the workforce and the military, or what pathways can we get them into to inspire them and get them there so we can really change our programming? And I think this is actually going to help us in the long run. So the Hamilton High School, from D to four stars, twenty-four twenty-five, and the Miami School, we bumped up from one star to one-and-a-half stars. Look at this. So we have the graduation rate, five stars across the board at Hamilton High School. That's really amazing. CCWMR, first year, two stars. I predict next year, looking at our data, we're probably going to be about two stars again, but then after that, it's going to jump out of the water. Ty and I have some amazing plans in place, and within three years, the programming at the high school is going to be super exciting. So come back and see it. It's going to be really, really cool. It's going to look very different than you've ever seen before. Miami School needs some significant support, but once again, with the help and the assistance and the support, we've got plans going in place to continue to move forward with, at the Miami School. And this is the real exciting data.
Yeah, apples to apples. We're just going to wrap up real quickly with how do we compare to our most twenty-similar schools. These are in order of who we're most like. I already noted that Middletown is our most similar school. So if you just glance across there, like, I'll go to progress where we have a four, and you just go down that column, fours are rare. Achievement, we're a three. Threes are rare. So it just gives you an idea of the great things that our teachers are doing for students in our district, and our leaders are doing as well, and our principals at the building level, of really getting more out of our students than what we see happening with our similar schools. This is just a quick snapshot. The top, you want to be furthest to the left on this. We're the fourth one in in growth when compared to our similar schools. Last year, I want to say we were the first. That fluctuates from year to year, but with the changes we put in place, we're celebrating that. We have done a huge shift from balanced literacy to structured literacy, and we are still far to the left. Last year, we were first in performance, slipped back a little bit this year, but I anticipate that that's going to continue to grow with the changes we have in place. This is math, third in line. If you're a zero in growth, that's expected. Twelve point four is insane. I think four years ago, we were fifteen-something. Those are insane numbers that are hard to maintain, but maintaining anything over a zero for an extended period of time is huge for our students. And then performance index are how well our students are achieving compared to others. And for the fourth year in a row, we're first in line. I will say for math and literacy, math is, speaking specifically, the elementary, we're starting our fifth year of doing the same thing. That makes a huge difference. You know, the first year of anybody doing something for the first time, there's a learning curve there. How do we compare in English language learners? We have some room to grow there. We have some, as our demographics are changing, we need to tap into what are happening in some of those other districts, because we have some room for growth there. Graduation rate, how we compare, pretty similar across the board. CCWM, new component. I know Jeremiah said some of the conversations that him and Ty are already having, there are some exciting things coming down the table that are not going to just be good for this measure, it's going to be good for kids. Chronic absenteeism, this one's the opposite way. You actually want to be further to the right. So before you're like, ah! Yeah, so we're actually doing pretty well there as well. Here is Butler County, so it gives you an idea of where we are at. I would encourage you, instead of just looking at the overall, overall score, look at the separate components, and you'll notice we're not really far off from any given school in any of the categories. The highest achievement is a four. We're a three. The highest progress is a four. We're a four. Gap closing, the highest is a five. We're a three. That's our biggest gap is being two away. Graduation, the highest is a three. We're a two. Early literacy, excuse me, the highest was a five, and we were a two. Early literacy, the highest is a three, and we're a two. CCWM, we're two away there. So that is a breakdown of all things data and school report card. And I do just want to put in a plug to thank each of you, because we have had to make a massive shift in resources, some of that being state mandate, some of that being leadership choice, and you have supported those choices and made that possible for our students. So thank you.
Julie, like, can I say a couple of things? Okay, first of all, I saw the, in the paper about the, Andrea and I have talked about the issues with medium income, and I, and I think that's a component a lot of people forget about. Not that it's an excuse, but that we are right in line with what they had seen in the studies. I think that's very interesting, and our goal is to obviously break that. But it's an interesting thing that the, you know, schools that have a higher median income are seeing higher test scores, and that's probably something that's been around for a long time. But I, I think it's important for our community to understand, too, that, could we do better on some things, yeah? And I think we're doing a great job on so many different things, but it's, this is only one yardstick.
Right.
When I look at the athletics we have, I look at our facilities, I look at our arts, I look at the training that goes into our teachers. I'm very proud of this district and everything that goes into it, and all of it is very student-driven. We are here because we like our kids. We love our kids, and our teachers are mission-oriented. I mean, I don't know if they use that term anymore, but we, I use that term a lot. If you, if you want to come here because you want to make a big paycheck, you're going to be, we're going to make sure you're fed. But you better come because you love the kids and you want to do what's best for kids. And our district has been doing that consistently over years and years and years. It's been a theme song around here. But I'm impressed with what's going on with instruction. I'm impressed with what's going on with our schools. And I've, I know, I'm the old guy, and I'll pull this card out every so often. I've seen the bad times. I've seen those times when we're like, we weren't that far up on the ladder. I think it's wonderful that when we look at districts around the state, I'm glad we have that metric to show that, hey, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, and we're doing it well, and our kids are benefiting from that. I've said before, I've had, I have three kids came through here. You can pick what you want to do in life because of the education you get here. So kudos on your report, on the, on this, on the presentation today, and I appreciate it. I think you, you went down in, you went far enough in the weeds for me.
Okay.
Okay.
I just think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But thank you so much. Thanks, all three of you guys for.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, impressive. You know, I, I think it's important for the community to understand, when you're looking at this and trying to compare it to last year, there's new factors in there. And I think if the general public would look at two things, one was the progress and gap closing. We either maintained every building or exceeded, and those two, and those, that's the constant there, not these other things that the state wants to, to throw in there. So I'm pleased with that, you know, with the progress our students are making and closing the gap. And I think it's a testament to our teachers. We have quality teachers that are making sure that these kids, or, you know, the students are, they're closing the gap, and they're, and the kids are progressing. And I just ask the public just to look at those two figures when you're looking at this.
And I will piggyback on that. We push growth. Keep growing them, the achievement will come. Keep growing them, and our data is showing that that is exactly what's happening. All right, thank you for your time.
Yeah, Julie, Carla, Jeremiah, I just want to thank you guys. I know I've moved down from upstairs to downstairs and am in a new role, but I couldn't be more confident in the team that's helping to lead that charge. You know, that goes out to our building administrators, to our teachers. You know, everyone really understands that our kids deserve the very best, and that includes high expectations. You know, I think for many years, our district just kind of kept the bar low, and it was easy to jump over that bar. And we've raised that bar, and we're helping to make sure kids have skills and support to, to do well. So I thank you guys for leading. I know that has not been easy, the mandates that continue to come down and change, and just as soon as we think we've got something implemented, there's, there's a change and a new hoop. But I'm, I'm very proud of you guys as a team, and I'm excited to see where we continue to go. But I think just the understanding of the numbers and what it does for kids, that's what I loved in the presentation tonight. You know, I was tallying at first, how many times I heard kids. It wasn't about a three. It was about this is our, these are our kids, these are the opportunities, these are the growth, and that's, that's what we're about. You know, Lauren, you mentioned that this is one, you know, piece of our district. I just want to, you know, mention to the, to the community, if you haven't seen, our quality profile came out, this state report card doesn't measure all of the amazing things that makes Hamilton, Hamilton. And I just, I'm extremely proud of this district. I'm extremely proud of our staff and our students and our community, and I want people to walk proud when they walk across that stage and get that Hamilton diploma, because that means something. And so just thank you for the work you guys are doing. Thanks for being here to walk through a lot of data, but, you know, we're in the right hands. We're going the right way, the great direction with my arrows, Jeremiah, no less. So thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, we are, I'd like to consider a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
I'd make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel and pending litigation and other items.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier, if you call the roll, please.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Copus?
Yes.
Ms. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Spreak?
Yes.
Teachers from other buildings that have been telling us how great it looks. So we've had a wonderful response, honestly.
It feels more like, when we went to Miami, we just got to sit in their cafeteria, and it felt just more like mature. And so it just is really cool that our cafeteria is a lot like that. The kids are doing better this year, like, from last year. We always would get up, scream across the whole lunchroom, because you couldn't sit with, like, all your friends. It's like kind of a small space, but now it's like a bigger space, more tables. You can just sit and eat with your friends, be comfortable. It's a very big change from last year.
I feel like it's very comfortable. The students enjoy eating there while talking to their friends. They really seem to like the new changes that were made this year.
We tried to bring not just Garfield in here, but also the city of Hamilton. We brought in Hamilton things from around our community, including some maps of the neighborhoods that our kids come from.
It makes you feel like you're being part of the community and enjoying the places that are important.
I'm just so glad that we get to share this with our students. I'm so glad they get to enjoy it, and I just love making Garfield even better.
As a new principal at Hamilton High School, I was really thinking about this Hamilton-Baden game and how we could make this a community celebration, but really at the core of the Baden mission is service to our community, and that's always been an important part of what my passion is in education. So whether it's working with Seventeen Strong and micro grants with our youth, or just getting out in the community and doing cleanups. We really wanted to launch something that was bigger than the football game, something where our kids give back to the community. Some of them are actually throwing stuff in the dumpster right now, helping out Ms. Ebony, the executive director at BTW. And then we have boys out in the community, walking the streets, picking up trash.
Over the summer, we had the, the opportunity to meet with Hamilton High's administration and, and just talk about this game. This game's such an awesome opportunity for both schools to showcase really what we believe what we're all about. And in meeting with Ty and talking, we wanted to do something to make our community better, to bring our, our two football teams that, that obviously are competing to win, win football games, but more importantly, we wanted to come together to, to serve the community. In the midst of a rivalry week, that we're working together to make things better. I think that, you know, when I look at, you know, our guys and Hamilton's guys, there's so many little faces in those crowds, little kids that look up to them. I mean, they see them as celebrities at times, and just to inspire in them a desire to, to be more than just what they are on the football field. I mean, they're leaders in our community, they're doing great things. And I think the opportunity to showcase that, really to inspire hopefully some other people to get involved in Seventeen Strong, here at the Booker T Washington Center, to get involved here, which are great organizations that need, need people like this to come out and serve and make the place better.
And it's just really, to me, signifies kind of a new launch of service to our community for both of our schools, for Baden and for Hamilton. So it was great to see everybody out in their jerseys. It is Hamilton versus Baden Friday night, but right now, everybody's working together to make our community a better place.
Thank you, Hamilton teachers, for everything you've done for us the last 12 years.
We are looking forward to our senior year. Thank you, teachers, and welcome back.
Well, welcome back, Hamilton City School District staff. Looking forward to a great year of, of the city partnering with the school district for great things to happen. This is a wow time, a wonderful time, to, to be in a city of Hamilton that's meant for our students, meant for teachers, meant for all of us. This is a great time in Hamilton and a great time for Hamilton City School District. You have proven so much to us, and you've been great partners.
Thank you, teachers, for being so kind to me.
My favorite teacher is Mrs. Bilter, is because she reminds me of my sister, because she was my sister's third-grade teacher.
Thank you for giving me.
Thank you for giving me like, giving me a boost for like getting up to like third grade because without you, I wouldn't be in third grade. So thank you, Ms. Holly and Ms. Perry, for helping me get a boost to third grade.
Hello, champions of education. I just want to take a moment and welcome you back for the new school year. Also, I also want to tell you, you're not going back just for the new school year. You're going back to your purpose, your passion, your ability to take every child to the next level. So as you start the new school year, I just want to tell you to win today by stacking one win up at a time. That child needs you, and can't no one do it like you, the best educators ever. Thank you.
I really like Mr. Wilson. He's really funny. He's also really kind, and he cares about his students.
I don't have no favorite teachers because all my teachers treat everybody with respect and kindness, and I love how they're always helping us.
From everyone here at Rose Automotive, we wish you a very successful '25-'26 school year.
I would like to thank all my teachers for role modeling, responsibility, and good character, helping us to become greater people each day.
Thank you for helping us learn and grow every day. We love you.
I'm thinking about Mr. Arnold because he's smart, kind, and funny. And Mrs. Baker, she knows how to write, and she's kind and smart.
Ms. Fulling is a world changer that I've ever known in my whole entire life, and she teaches me so much that so I can make it to success.
I'm John Gaudelli from the Hamilton Community Foundation. I'd like to take this opportunity to say welcome back and thank you to one of the most important groups that we have in our city. The Hamilton City School employees make a difference every day in the lives of so many people. We're so appreciative and welcome back for the new year.
I chose Mr. Wilson because he buzzed my hair in class in fourth period for me, and he's just a kind-hearted soul, and he helps everybody out with their work.
Thank you to Ms. Nikolinko, Ms. Nagras, Ms. Cassafelli, and to Ms. Jackie.
They make me feel like I'm safe.
I would like to say thank you to the Hamilton staff for being how receptive they are. They're great listeners, and I hope you look forward to your experience here.
The Greater Hamilton Chamber of Commerce is thrilled to welcome you back to school. You have such an important role to shape our future leaders and entrepreneurs to dream big, think boldly, and create fearlessly. Every classroom is a launchpad, and every idea that you ignite has the power to shape the future of our community. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you for all your hard work and helping us be successful. Hope you guys have a fun time with new students.
They teach us how to write, and they learn some numbers and like spell things.
I would have to say my math teachers, Ms. Taylor and Ms. Hayne, because anytime you walk in there, they put a smile on your face and let their classroom be really welcoming.
Welcome back to this school year, all you wonderful educators. And I'm Sammy Broyles from Miami University. And I just want to take this time to thank you for pouring into all the students this year, all the things that you do as one plant, the other one's water. And it's an increase to our community how you give back. And you never know what that little seed would do to change a student's life by that small word of encouragement, like Mr. Nichols did to Ty Smallwood, encourage him to be an educator. And now we have a principal now at the high school. Thank you for all that you do.
All the teachers, like in fourth grade, are very sweet and very caring about people. They hope, like, they're understanding, and they understand if you're feeling something, that they're there to help you. And like my teachers and my other teachers, they all come to my softball games and like sports, and they're supportive, and they're, they're just like so many things I can't even name.
I choose Mrs. Hendricks, our safety and security monitor, because she's like everybody's school mom and is there for everyone.
Thank you to all my teachers who I've had in the past to help welcome me into Hamilton as I moved in.
Thank you to all my teachers who believe in me and helped me throughout all my years at Hamilton.
Welcome back, teachers. Thank you for all the fun we're going to have this year.
On behalf of Seventeen Strong, we welcome you to this exciting new school year, and we wish you much success.
I would like to thank Ms. Crouch. She is one of my favorite teachers. Love her.
Thank you for all the staff and Miami students, you know. Primero, me da aprecio todo lo que han hecho por mí este año. Something for Spanish.
Mr. Pay is my favorite because he's somebody that you can really trust and put all of your emotions into.
The thing about a teacher is they are really smart, and they teach us things. They like teach us math, how to spell, and how to write really, really good. And I want to say thank you to all the teachers.
Welcome back to school, educators. Just know that all the work that you're doing at the school during the school day is reinforced with the work that we do after school at Boys and Girls Club. While we're heading into or continuing to grow our partnership with the school, we're expanding this year to open up a new club at Linden Elementary School, just like we opened up two years ago at Highland Elementary. Just know that all of the great things, all of the learning, is reinforced in the after school. Thanks to our awesome partnership between Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton and Hamilton City School District. Good luck and have an amazing school year.
I love Hamilton City School District because Wilson is amazing school, and the staff are also helpful to help the students grow.
We love Wilson because our teachers help us win. We love Wilson because they help us get an education right.
We love Wilson. We love Wilson so much. The teachers are so nice, and they're very helpful whenever you need them.
Thank you, Wilson. Welcome back.
Thank you for being our teacher.
Thank you for being good teachers.
We love our teacher at Crawford Woods.
Welcome back.
Thank you for being our teachers.
Thank you for being our teachers.
Thank you for being our teachers.
So first day is so important just that the kids feel reassured, that they know where they're going and that they're supported. If they have a bad first day, it just makes them nervous after that. So we just want to make them feel like they know what they're doing and that people are here to help them.
We're always excited to welcome our Fairwood Falcons back to school. Lots of energy, lots of excited faces. I think we only had two sets of tears.
I think Wilson is special because the staff here is so committed. They're all working together. They're all teaming together. They are ready for these kids, and they're excited to meet them.
We want to continue to be a safe place for them, where they can grow socially, academically, and emotionally. We're here to help grow your kids. If you need anything, give us a call. We're here to support you guys.
Our phrase is here is going to be every night, every day, because we are the Wilson Knights. So it's to make every kid feel connected and supported every day.
We love Arrow. Arrow is new this year, but most of the kids were just, you know, full-on smiles, happy to see the dog here. Welcome anytime. We are here to support our kids, to support our staff, and to grow, grow, grow.
Arrow is the Hamilton City School District's first therapy dog. She is certified through the AKC as a certified therapy dog. She is here for our students and our staff and is just a part of the Hamilton community.
And I'm just so impressed with her poise. She is so well-trained and just does a great job already to lighten all of our moods. I couldn't be thankful enough to Leadership Hamilton, Hamilton Community Foundation, and the Pauls and Stripes College for preparing such an amazing partner. We couldn't have asked for a better dog.
I know Andrea just saw the benefit and all the research that was behind how therapy dogs make a solid impact with students, you know, through attendance and grades and behavior. And she did a lot of research herself and brought it to the team and wanted to take the project on.
And this is one proactive strategy that local communities are using to help build resilience, kindness, positivity. There's a lot of research out there about how a therapy dog will lower anxiety and stress, which so many of our young people and our staff are facing on a day-to-day basis. Our goal is to get a dog for each of our buildings. As you know, there's a lot of needs that go around, and Arrow is just one. We're a very large district. And so our goal is to onboard four to five dogs a year. That would allow us to eventually get there in the next few years to a dog per school. That will allow that dog to become really a part of that school culture. Through community donations, through different agencies, we've been able to raise the money completely so that not one district dollar is being used for this.
She's calm, mild-mannered, just very sweet, very gentle, listens very well. A lot of love, a lot of love, a lot of happiness, a lot of energy behind it, which is great.
Welcome, everybody, to Garfield Middle School. My name is Josh Marjum. I'm the principal here at Garfield. Tonight, we are here to commemorate a legendary coach, teacher, and family man from the Hamilton community, Coach Tim Reed. I was fortunate, yeah. I was fortunate enough to have played for Coach Reed, as I'm sure many of you in the crowd were. We often talk about how many wins coaches have or how many years they coached, but typically, we don't hear many stories or talk about what really matters, which is the lessons that coaches teach their players that go beyond sports. One thing that sticks out to me that I still bring up to this day is a conversation I had with Coach Reed in high school. He was talking about how important it was that we are good people and not just good players. Of course, he had his own way to explain this. He said, "Marjum, it's not about the X's and the O's. It's about the Jimmy's and the Joe's." At that time, I just thought that was funny, but I didn't understand what he was really saying. And since then, I've thought a lot about that frequently in my day-to-day work. Without a good group of people around me to support me, I would not have been as successful in life. The people we have in our team and life are the most important teammates we will have. Coach Reed was not just a great coach, but a great person. I'm sure many of us in this room are glad he was on our team. I would now like to welcome up our next speaker to the podium. Please help me give a warm welcome to Coach Reed's son, Jimmy Reed. Good evening, everyone. First off, I'd like to thank everyone for coming on behalf of my family. My mother, Diane Reed, my sister, Shannon Reed, my grandma, Willa Reed, my uncle, Wes Reed. It is incredible seeing everyone come together to celebrate this special moment. As many of you already know, our dad was a very humble man, and he would have a hard time accepting all of this being done on his behalf. Dad spent 32 years teaching, and his efforts have made a lasting impact on many lives. This was very apparent without pouring of love from the community since his passing. He left his mark on many people's hearts, and we are all better for knowing Tim Reed. Our family would like to thank Josh Marjum and the principal here at Garfield and the Board of Education for making all of this possible. Also, we would like to thank the community for keeping his memory alive and sharing with us the impact that he left on the hearts of everyone that came into contact with him. He is truly missed. I was going through some pictures the other day, and I came across some statements made about my father I'd like to share with you. A quote from Walter Vickers. "I started teaching at Garfield in the 1985 along with Tim. We coached basketball together the years I was in Hamilton. Like everyone who knew Tim in any manner, I was immediately impressed by his kindness, calmness, and genuine care for all people. Tim was a treasure for all students he served at Hamilton. I know that words cannot express how good things about my father and that... I know that words cannot express good things about my father and that left..." Sorry, guys. Okay. "I know that words cannot express good things about my father and that the life he led. We pray that future scholars and student athletes see his name on the court and become curious and inspired. I know I may be biased, but my dad was a pretty awesome guy. This floor dedication truly gives him the recognition that he deserves. His incredible legacy will live on with this floor dedication and the Tim Reed Scholarship that has been made in his memory." Can the board members please stand up of the scholarship legacy fund? You guys do an awesome job with everything you do. As many of you know, there is a legacy fund created in Dad's memory. Since 2019, the Coach Tim Reed Legacy Fund has provided over 35 scholarships to college-bound seniors from Tallawanna High School and Hamilton High School. Coach Reed exemplified the traits associated with outstanding teacher and coach. Honesty, integrity, loyalty, respectfulness, responsibility, humility, compassion, and fairness were all strong principles and core values that Coach Reed modeled daily when interacting with his students, coworkers, players, and people. Our hope is that the floor dedication reaches the community of Hamilton and inspires the young students. His legacy will live on for many years to come, and we are very appreciative of everyone that made this happen. Thank you. At this time, I would like to bring up Ms. Diane Reed and also Coach Reed's mother, and also City Council member, Tim Nab, for a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We would like to welcome you for the first time to Coach Reed Court. Okay, before we conclude, and I am going to let everybody walk around and talk because I know you guys want to do that. Before we conclude, I just need to thank a few people for helping make this event possible. All of our Hamilton City School officials, including those who brought these giant scissors, please give them a round of applause for supporting this. I would also like to thank our Hamilton City School Superintendent, Ms. Andrea Blevins, and our school board members who supported this event. Please stand so everybody knows who you are, so we can give them a round of applause. Have to thank Mr. Kilby, Mr. Jeff Kilby, Mr. Tom Schuler, and all of our custodians who worked behind the scenes with the company who completed this project. They did a wonderful job. I would be remiss not to thank the person that runs this gym, Mr. Jimmy Sizmore, for helping me design all this and staying involved the entire time. Shout out to Jimmy Sizmore. Of course, I'd like to thank Ms. Diane Reed and Coach Reed's entire family for helping make this night possible and always supporting our schools. And finally, I feel like I'm giving an award speech or something. Finally, most importantly, I'd like to thank Coach Reed for his patience and for always taking care of the Jimmy's and the Joe's. Thank you, guys, for coming out today. Thanks, Coach Reed. And feel free to hang around, grab some waters out front, and converse. Thanks for coming.
So this is Hamilton's pre-apprenticeship program. It enables the kids to learn core fundamentals of all these different industries. State of Ohio recognizes it for construction, manufacturing, agriculture, architecture, and engineering. So these are core fundamentals for all of those different industries. We don't like to call it even a core curriculum anymore. We call it a confidence class. So it's to give you confidence in using hand tools, using power tools, understanding what you're learning in class and how it applies to the real world and careers that are available for you. So there's two different aspects to it. So in order to complete the class, the kids complete a series of quizzes based off the curriculum, and they also have to attend class so much. So they're actually getting hands-on instruction from Duranat employees onsite. The kids are actually working with them. They're exploring on that site. We do it to the curriculum. They do it to the quizzes. However, if the kid chooses to go to the next level, they're able to take what's called the credential course. So they're now able to go and get a full credential from it. So even if they don't do it now, the beauty of it is they can take it later on in life, and it's the first half of 39 different apprenticeships that are out there in the industry. They're ready to go. They're ready to go right into the workforce right now and today. So we want employers in the Hamilton area to say, hey, if Duranat taught these guys, they're ready to go, guys and girls. We have a lot of girls that are coming in the program now. They're ready to go directly into the workforce and come work for my company. They are going to be able to do their OSHA. They're going to be able to understand a power tool. They're going to understand how to work inside of a working environment. What people don't realize is we have so much talent sitting inside that school, sitting inside this community, and it's ready to go. They just need somebody to sit down with them, tell them that we believe in them, show them the confidence, and then to back it up with opportunity. Now I need employers to step up and say, hey, we'll take them because they went through this program.
We knew teachers were routinely spending their personal dollars to get their classrooms ready.
A lot of people don't realize how much money teachers spend out of their own pocket to support their classrooms.
We have lots of new teachers who don't have anything to prepare their classrooms, so they've got to go out and buy all this stuff. We have teachers who are switching from one grade level to another, and then we have teachers who oftentimes will become certified in another area, and so they switch too. So all these people are saying, "If I'm going to have the best, most interesting classroom, it's got to be right." And so what do I do? I go shopping. They're spending, on average, between $500 and $900 a person, sometimes annually, just to get their classrooms ready.
Every year, I spend hundreds of dollars on my classroom, and I've never received any outside assistance there, and so this was really nice. It put some money back in my pocket.
There are so many teachers who do have needs and have really legitimate things that they're proposing, and I'd like to see us be able to support more.
They literally cheered when I emptied a new box of dry erase markers into our bin because we use those supplies every single day, and they really appreciate, you know, a new, fresh product that's working.
I believe teachers have been spending their own money forever, but I don't know of many other communities where there is an organization like our foundation that has stepped forward. I think that's really special.
When I first saw the application and was asked how I would spend up to $300 in my classroom, I was stumped. Teachers dream of having extra money, and this isn't a question we are asked very often. School supplies are expensive, as are supplemental learning materials and social emotional tools that are all key to a student's success. Teachers often spend their own money to make sure our classrooms are equipped to meet the needs of every student.
This is just an outstanding way to say, "We understand the community foundation is a perfect place to have a fund like this where we can show support for teachers year in and year out."
A couple of years ago, we had a plan that we wanted to work with a company to start designing a cafeteria that was different than your typical school cafeteria. We wanted it to feel more like a food court and less like your typical long tables, benches, rows. So we wanted some different types of seating in there. The response has been wonderful, not just from the students, but also from the community. We've had lots of adults in here on open house. We've had other jealous teachers from other buildings that have been telling us how great it looks. So we've had a wonderful response, honestly.
It feels more like when we went to Miami, we just got to sit in their cafeteria, and it felt just more like mature. And so it just is really cool that our cafeteria is a lot like that.
The kids are doing better this year than from last year. We always would get up, scream across the whole lunchroom because you couldn't sit with like all your friends. It's like kind of a small space, but now it's like a bigger space, more tables. You can just sit and eat with your friends, be comfortable. It's a very big change from last year.
I feel like it's very comfortable. The students enjoy eating there while talking to their friends. They really seem to like the new changes that were made this year.
We tried to bring not just Garfield in here, but also the city of Hamilton. We brought in Hamilton things from around our community, including some maps of the neighborhoods that our kids come from.
It makes you feel like you're being part of the community and enjoying the places that are important.
I'm just so glad that we get to share this with our students. I'm so glad they get to enjoy it, and I just love making Garfield even better.
As a new principal at Hamilton High School, I was really thinking about this Hamilton-Baden game and how we could make this a community celebration, but really at the core of the Baden mission is service to our community, and that's always been an important part of what my passion is in education. So whether it's working with 17 Strong and micro grants with our youth, or just getting out in the community and doing cleanups, we really wanted to launch something that was bigger than the football game, something where our kids give back to the community. Some of them are actually throwing stuff in the dumpster right now, helping out Ms. Ebony, the executive director at BTW. And then we have boys out in the community, walking the streets, picking up trash.
Over the summer, we had the opportunity to meet with Hamilton High's administration and just talk about this game. This game is such an awesome opportunity for both schools to showcase really what we believe, what we're all about. And in meeting with Ty and talking, we wanted to do something to make our community better, to bring our two football teams that obviously are competing to win football games, but more importantly, we wanted to come together to serve the community. In the midst of a rivalry week, that we're working together to make things better. I think that, you know, when I look at our guys and Hamilton's guys, there's so many little faces in those crowds, little kids that look up to them. I mean, they see them as celebrities at times, and just to inspire in them a desire to be more than just what they are on the football field. I mean, they're leaders in our community. They're doing great things. And I think the opportunity to showcase that, really to inspire hopefully some other people to get involved in 17 Strong here at the Booker T Washington Center, to get involved here, which are great organizations that need people like this to come out and serve and make the place better.
And it's just really, to me, signifies kind of a new launch of service to our community for both of our schools, for Baden and for Hamilton. So it was great to see everybody out in their jerseys. It is Hamilton versus Baden Friday night, but right now, everybody's working together to make our community a better place.
Thank you, Hamilton teachers, for everything you've done for us the last 12 years.
We are looking forward to our senior year. Thank you, teachers, and welcome back.
Well, welcome back, Hamilton City School District staff. Looking forward to a great year of the city partnering with the school district for great things to happen. This is a wow time, a wonderful time, to be in the city of Hamilton that's meant for our students, meant for teachers, meant for all of us. This is a great time in Hamilton and a great time for Hamilton City School District. You have proven so much to us, and you've been great partners.
Thank you, teachers, for being so kind to me.
My favorite teacher is Mrs. Bilter because she reminds me of my sister because she was my sister's third-grade teacher.
Thank you for giving me, like, giving me a boost for, like, getting up to, like, third grade because without you, I wouldn't be in third grade. So thank you, Ms. Holly and Ms. Barry, for helping me get a boost to third grade.
Hello, champions of education. I just want to take a moment and welcome you back for the new school year. I also want to tell you, you're not going back just for the new school year. You're going back to your purpose, your passion, your ability to take every child to the next level. So as you start the new school year, I just want to tell you to win today by stacking one win up at a time. That child needs you, and can't no one do it like you, the best educators ever. Thank you.
I really like Mr. Lewis. He's really funny. He's also really kind, and he cares about his students.
I don't have no favorite teachers because all my teachers treat everybody with respect and kindness, and I love how they're always helping us.
From everyone here at Rose Automotive, we wish you a very successful '25-'26 school year.
I would like to thank all my teachers for role modeling, responsibility, and good character, helping us to become greater people each day.
Thank you for helping us learn and grow every day. We love you.
I'm thinking about Mr. Arnold because he's smart, kind, and funny. And Mrs. Baker, she knows how to write, and she's kind and smart.
Ms. Bulling is a world changer that I've ever known in my whole entire life, and she teaches me so much that so I can make it to success.
I'm John Gaudelli from the Hamilton Community Foundation. I'd like to take this opportunity to say, "Welcome back," and thank you to one of the most important groups that we have in our city. The Hamilton City School employees make a difference every day in the lives of so many people. We're so appreciative, and welcome back for the new year.
I chose Mr. Wilson because he buzzed my hair in class in fourth period for me, and he's just a kind-hearted soul, and he helps everybody out with their work.
Thank you to Ms. Nikolinko, Ms. Nagras, Ms. Cassafelli, and to Ms. Jackie.
They make me feel like I'm safe.
I would like to say thank you to the Hamilton staff for being how perceptive they are. They're great listeners, and I hope you look forward to your experience here.
The Greater Hamilton Chamber of Commerce is thrilled to welcome you back to school. You have such an important role to shape our future leaders and entrepreneurs to dream big, think boldly, and create fearlessly. Every classroom is a launchpad, and every idea that you ignite has the power to shape the future of our community. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you for all your hard work and helping us be successful. Hope you guys have a fun time with new students.
They teach us how to write, and they learn some numbers and, like, spell things.
I would have to say my math teacher is Ms. Taylor and Ms. Hayne because anytime you walk in there, they'll put a smile on your face and let their classroom be really welcoming.
Welcome back to this school year, all you wonderful educators. And I'm Sammy Broyles from Miami University, and I just want to take this time to thank you for pouring into all the students this year, all the things that you do as one plant, the other one's water, and it's an increase to our community how you give back. And you never know what that little seed would do to change a student's life by that small word of encouragement, like Mr. Nichols did to Ty Smallwood, encouraged him to be an educator, and now we have a principal now at the high school. Thank you for all that you do.
All the teachers, like, in fourth grade are very sweet and very caring about people. They hope, like, they're understanding, and they understand if you're feeling something that they're there to help you. And like my teachers and my other teachers, they all come to my softball games and, like, sports, and they're supportive, and they're just, like, so many things I can't even name.
I choose Mrs. Hendricks, our safety and security monitor, because she's like everybody's school mom and is dead for everyone.
Thank you to all my teachers who I've had in the past to help welcome me into Hamilton as I moved in.
Thank you to all my teachers who believe in me and helped me throughout all my years at Hamilton.
Welcome back, teachers. Thank you for all the fun we're going to have this year.
On behalf of 17 Strong, we welcome you to this exciting new school year, and we wish you much success.
I would like to thank Ms. Crouch. She is one of my favorite teachers. Love her.
Thank you for all the stuff in Miami students, you know.
Mr. Pay is my favorite because he's somebody that you can really trust and put all of your emotions into.
The thing about a teacher is they are really smart, and they teach us things. They, like, teach us math, how to spell, and how to write really, really good. And I want to say thank you to all the teachers.
Welcome back to school, educators. Just know that all the work that you're doing at the school during the school day is reinforced with the work that we do after school at Boys and Girls Club. While we're heading into or continuing to grow our partnership with the school, we're expanding this year to open up a new club at Linden Elementary School, just like we opened up two years ago at Highland Elementary. Just know that all of the great things, all of the learning, is reinforced in the after school thanks to our awesome partnership between Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton and Hamilton City School District. Good luck and have an amazing school year.
I love Hamilton City School District because Wilson is amazing school, and the staff are also helpful to help the students grow.
We love Wilson because our teachers help us win. We love Wilson because they help us get our education right.
We love Wilson. We love Wilson so much. The teachers are so nice, and they're very helpful whenever we need them.
Thank you, Wilson. Welcome back.
Thank you for being our teacher.
Thank you for being good teachers.
We love our teacher at Crawford Woods.
Welcome back.
Thank you for being our teachers.
Thank you for being our teachers.
Thank you for being our teachers.
The first day is so important just so that the kids feel reassured, that they know where they're going, and that they're supported. If they have a bad first day, it just makes them nervous after that. So we just want to make them feel like they know what they're doing and that people are here to help them.
We're always excited to welcome our Fairwood Falcons back to school. Lots of energy, lots of excited faces. I think we only had two sets of tears.
I think Wilson is special because the staff here is so committed. They're all working together. They're all teaming together. They are ready for these kids, and they're excited to meet them.
We want to continue to be a safe place for them, where they can grow socially, academically, and emotionally. We're here to help grow your kids. If you need anything, give us a call. We're here to support you guys.
Our phrase is here is going to be "Every night, every day" because we are the Wilson Knights. So it's to make every kid feel connected and supported every day.
We love Arrow. Arrow is new this year, but most of the kids were just, you know, full-on smiles, happy to see the dog here. Welcome anytime. We are here to support our kids, to support our staff, and to grow, grow, grow.
Arrow is the Hamilton City School District's first therapy dog. She is certified through the AKC as a certified therapy dog. She is here for our students and our staff and is just a part of the Hamilton community.
And I'm just so impressed with her poise. She is so well-trained and just does a great job already to lighten all of our moods. I couldn't be thankful enough to Leadership Hamilton, Hamilton Community Foundation, and the Pauls and Stripes College for preparing such an amazing partner. We couldn't have asked for a better dog.
I know Andrea just saw the benefit and all the research that was behind how therapy dogs make a solid impact with students, you know, through attendance and grades and behavior. And she did a lot of research herself and brought it to the team and wanted to take the project on.
And this is one proactive strategy that local communities are using to help build resilience, kindness, positivity. There's a lot of research out there about how a therapy dog will lower anxiety and stress, which so many of our young people and our staff are facing on a day-to-day basis. Our goal is to get a dog for each of our buildings. As you know, there's a lot of needs that go around, and Arrow is just one. We're a very large district, and so our goal is to onboard four to five dogs a year. That would allow us to eventually get there in the next few years to a dog per school. That will allow that dog to become really a part of that school culture. Through community donations, through different agencies, we've been able to raise the money completely so that not one district dollar is being used for this.
She's calm, mild-mannered, just very sweet, very gentle, listens very well. A lot of love, a lot of love, a lot of happiness, a lot of energy behind it, which is great.
Welcome, everybody, to Garfield Middle School. My name is Josh Marjoram. I'm the principal here at Garfield. Tonight, we are here to commemorate a legendary coach, teacher, and family man from the Hamilton community, Coach Tim Reed. I was fortunate, yeah. I was fortunate enough to have played for Coach Reed, as I'm sure many of you in the crowd were. We often talk about how many wins coaches have or how many years they coached, but typically we don't hear many stories or talk about what really matters, which is the lessons that coaches teach their players that go beyond sports. One thing that sticks out to me that I still bring up to this day is a conversation I had with Coach Reed in high school. He was talking about how important it was that we are good people and not just good players. Of course, he had his own way to explain this. He said, "Marjoram. It's not about the X's and the O's. It's about the Jimmy's and the Joe's." At that time, I just thought that was funny, but I didn't understand what he was really saying. And since then, I've thought a lot about that frequently in my day-to-day work. Without a good group of people around me to support me, I would not have been as successful in life. The people we have on our team in life are the most important teammates we will have. Coach Reed was not just a great coach, but a great person. I'm sure many of us in this room are glad he was on our team. I would now like to welcome up our next speaker to the podium. Please help me give a warm welcome to Coach Reed's son, Jimmy Reed.
Good evening, everyone. First off, I'd like to thank everyone for coming on behalf of my family. My mother, Diane Reed, my sister Shannon Reed, my grandma Willa Reed, my uncle Wes Reed. It is incredible seeing everyone come together to celebrate this special moment. As many of you already know, our dad was a very humble man, and he would have a hard time accepting all of this being done on his behalf. Dad spent 32 years teaching, and his efforts have made a lasting impact on many lives. This was very apparent without pouring of love from the community since his passing. He left his mark on many people's hearts, and we are all better for knowing Tim Reed. Our family would like to thank Josh Marjoram and the principal here at Garfield and the Board of Education for making all of this possible. Also, we would like to thank the community for keeping his memory alive and sharing with us the impact that he left on the hearts of everyone that came into contact with him. He is truly missed. I was going through some pictures the other day, and I came across some statements made about my father I'd like to share with you. A quote from Walter Vickers, "I started teaching at Garfield in the 1985 along with Tim. We coached basketball together the years I was in Hamilton. Like everyone who knew Tim in any manner, I was immediately impressed..." Like everyone who knew Tim in any manner, I was immediately impressed by his kindness, calmness, and genuine care for all people. Tim was a treasure for all students he served at Hamilton. I know that words cannot express how good things about my father and that... I know that words cannot express good things about my father and that left... Sorry, guys. Okay. I know that words cannot express good things about my father and that the life he led. We pray that future scholars and student athletes see his name on the court and become curious and inspired. I know I may be biased, but my dad was a pretty awesome guy. This floor dedication truly gives him the recognition that he deserves. His incredible legacy will live on with this floor dedication and the Tim Reed Scholarship that has been made in his memory. Can the board members please stand up? On, of the scholarship legacy fund? You guys, you guys do an awesome job with everything you do. As many of you know, there is a legacy fund created in Dad's memory. Since 2019, the Coach Tim Reed Legacy Fund has provided over 35 scholarships to college-bound seniors from Tawana High School and Hamilton High School. Coach Reed exemplified the traits associated with outstanding teacher and coach. Honesty, integrity, loyalty, respectfulness, responsibility, humility, compassion, and fairness were all strong principles and core values that Coach Reed modeled daily when interacting with his students, coworkers, players, and people. Our hope is that the floor dedication reaches the community of Hamilton and inspires the young students. His legacy will live on for many years to come, and we are very appreciative of everyone that made this happen. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to bring up Ms. Diane Reed and also Coach Reed's mother and also City Council member, Tim Nab, for a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We would like to welcome you for the first time to Coach Reed Court. Okay, before we conclude, and I am going to let everybody walk around and talk because I know you guys want to do that. Before we conclude, I just need to thank a few people for helping make this event possible. All of our Hamilton City School officials, including those who brought these giant scissors. Please give them a round of applause for supporting this. I would also like to thank our Hamilton City School Superintendent, Ms. Andrea Blevins, and our school board members who supported this event. Please stand so everybody knows who you are, so we can give them a round of applause. Have to thank Mr. Kilby, Mr. Jeff Kilby, Mr. Tom Schuler, and all of our custodians who worked behind the scenes with the company who completed this project. They did a wonderful job. I would be remiss not to thank the person that runs this gym, Mr. Jimmy Sizemore, for helping me design all this and staying involved the entire time. Shout out to Jimmy Sizemore. Of course, I'd like to thank Ms. Diane Reed and Coach Reed's entire family for helping make this night possible and always supporting our schools. And finally, I feel like I'm giving an award speech or something. Finally, most importantly, I'd like to thank Coach Reed for his patience and for always taking care of the Jimmy's and the Joe's. Thank you, guys, for coming out today. Thanks, Coach Reed. And feel free to hang around, grab some waters out front and converse. Thanks for coming. So this is Hamilton's pre-apprenticeship program. It enables the kids to learn core fundamentals of all these different industries. State of Ohio recognizes it for construction, manufacturing, agriculture, architecture, and engineering. So these are core fundamentals for all of those different industries. We don't like to call it even a core curriculum anymore. We call it a confidence class. So it's to give you confidence in using hand tools, using power tools, understanding what you're learning in class and how it applies to the real world and careers that are available for you. So there's two different aspects to it. So in order to complete the class, the kids complete a series of quizzes based off the curriculum. And they also have to attend class so much. So they're actually getting hands-on instruction from Duranat employees onsite. The kids are actually working with them. They're exploring on that site. We do it to the curriculum. They do it to the quizzes. However, if the kid chooses to go to the next level, they're able to take what's called the credential course. So they're now able to go and get a full credential from it. So even if they don't do it now, the beauty of it is they can take it later on in life. And it's the first half of 39 different apprenticeships that are out there in the industry. They're ready to go. They're ready to go right into the workforce right now and today. So we want employers in the Hamilton area to say, hey, if Duranat taught these guys, they're ready to go, guys and girls, we have a lot of girls that are coming in the program now. They're ready to go directly into the workforce and come work for my company. They are going to be able to do their OSHA. They're going to be able to understand a power tool. They're going to understand how to work inside of a working environment. What people don't realize is we have so much talent sitting inside that school, sitting inside this community, and it's ready to go. They just need somebody to sit down with them, tell them that we believe in them, show them the confidence, and then to back it up with opportunity. Now I need employers to step up and say, hey, we'll take them because they went through this program.
We knew teachers were routinely spending their personal dollars to get their classrooms ready.
A lot of people don't realize how much money teachers spend out of their own pocket to support their classrooms.
We have lots of new teachers who don't have anything to prepare their classrooms, so they've got to go out and buy all this stuff. We have teachers who are switching from one grade level to another. And then we have teachers who oftentimes will become certified in another area, and so they switch too. So all these people are saying, if I'm going to have the best, most interesting classroom, it's got to be right. And so what do I do? I go shopping. They're spending, on average, between $500 and $900 a person, sometimes annually, just to get their classrooms ready.
Every year, I spend hundreds of dollars on my classroom. And I've never received any outside assistance there. And so this was really nice. It put some money back in my pocket.
There are so many teachers who do have needs and have really legitimate things that they're proposing. And I'd like to see us be able to support more.
They literally cheered when I emptied a new box of dry erase markers into our bin because we use those supplies every single day and they really appreciate, you know, a new, fresh product that's working.
I believe teachers have been spending their own money forever. But I don't know of many other communities where there is an organization like our foundation that has stepped forward. I think that's really special.
When I first saw the application and was asked how I would spend up to $300 in my classroom, I was stumped. Teachers dream of having extra money, and this isn't a question we are asked very often. School supplies are expensive, as are supplemental learning materials and social-emotional tools that are all key to a student's success. Teachers often spend their own money to make sure our classrooms are equipped to meet the needs of every student.
This is just an outstanding way to say, we understand. The Community Foundation is a perfect place to have a fund like this, where we can show support for teachers year in and year out.
Couple of years ago, we had a plan that we wanted to work with a company to start designing a cafeteria that was different than your typical school cafeteria. We wanted it to feel more like a food court and less like your typical long tables, benches, rows. So we wanted some different types of seating in there. The response has been wonderful, not just from the students, but also from the community. We've had lots of adults in here on open house. We've had other jealous teachers from other buildings that have been telling us how great it looks. So we've had a wonderful response, honestly.
It feels more like when we went to Miami, we just got to sit in their cafeteria and it felt just more like mature. And so it just is really cool that our cafeteria is a lot like that.
The kids are doing better this year, like from last year. We always would get up, scream across the whole lunchroom because you couldn't sit with like all your friends. It's like kind of a small space, but now it's like a bigger space, more tables. You can just sit and eat with your friends, be comfortable. It's a very big change from last year.
I feel like it's very comfortable. The students enjoy eating there while talking to their friends. They really seem to like the new changes that were made this year.
We tried to bring not just Garfield in here, but also the city of Hamilton. We brought in Hamilton things from around our community, including some maps of the neighborhoods that our kids come from.
It makes you feel like you're being part of the community and enjoying the places that are important.
I'm just so glad that we get to share this with our students. I'm so glad they get to enjoy it. And I just love making Garfield even better.
As a new principal at Hamilton High School, I was really thinking about this Hamilton-Baden game and how we could make this a community celebration. But really, at the core of the Baden mission is service to our community. And that's always been an important part of what my passion is in education. So whether it's working with Seventeen Strong and micro grants with our youth or just getting out in the community and doing cleanups. We really wanted to launch something that was bigger than the football game, something where our kids give back to the community. Some of them are actually throwing stuff in the dumpster right now, helping out Ms. Ebony, the executive director at BTW. And then we have boys out in the community, walking the streets, picking up trash.
Over the summer, we had the opportunity to meet with Hamilton High's administration and just talk about this game. This game is such an awesome opportunity for both schools to showcase really what we believe, what we're all about. And in meeting with Ty and talking, we wanted to do something to make our community better, to bring our two football teams that obviously are competing to win football games. But more importantly, we wanted to come together to serve the community. In the midst of a rivalry week, that we're working together to make things better. I think that, you know, when I look at our guys and Hamilton's guys, there's so many little faces in those crowds, little kids that look up to them. I mean, they see them as celebrities at times. And just to inspire in them a desire to be more than just what they are on the football field. I mean, they're leaders in our community. They're doing great things. And I think the opportunity to showcase that, really to inspire hopefully some other people to get involved in Seventeen Strong here at the Booker T. Washington Center, to get involved here, which are great organizations that need people like this to come out and serve and make the place better.
And it's just really, to me, signifies kind of a new launch of service to our community for both of our schools, for Baden and for Hamilton. So it was great to see everybody out in their jerseys. It is Hamilton versus Baden Friday night, but right now, everybody's working together to make our community a better place.
Thank you, Hamilton teachers, for everything you've done for us the last 12 years.
We are looking forward to our senior year. Thank you, teachers, and welcome back.
Well, welcome back, Hamilton City School District staff. Looking forward to a great year of the city partnering with the school district for great things to happen. This is a wow time, a wonderful time, to be in a city of Hamilton that's meant for our students, meant for teachers, meant for all of us. This is a great time in Hamilton and a great time for Hamilton City School District. You have proven so much to us, and you've been great partners.
Thank you, teachers, for being so kind to me.
My favorite teacher is Mrs. Bilter is because she reminds me of my sister because she was my sister's third-grade teacher.
Thank you for giving me, like, giving me a boost for, like, getting up to, like, third grade because without you, I wouldn't be in third grade. So thank you, Ms. Colin Bisberry, for helping me get a boost to third grade.
Hello, champions of education. I just want to take a moment and welcome you back for the new school year. Also, I also want to tell you, you're not going back just for the new school year. You're going back to your purpose, your passion, your ability to take every child to the next level. So as you start the new school year, I just want to tell you to win today by stacking one win up at a time. That child needs you, and can't no one do it like you. The best educators ever. Thank you.
I really like Mr. Lewis. He's really funny. He's also really kind and he cares about his students.
I don't have no favorite teachers because all my teachers treat everybody with respect and kindness. And I love how they're always helping us.
From everyone here at Rose Automotive, we wish you a very successful 25-26 school year.
I would like to thank all my teachers for role modeling, responsibility, and good character, helping us to become greater people each day.
Thank you for helping us learn and grow every day. We love you.
I'm thinking about Mr. Arnold because he's smart, kind, and funny. And Mrs. Baker, she knows how to write, and she's kind and smart.
Ms. Bulling is a world changer that I've ever known in my whole entire life. And she teaches me so much that so I can make it to success.
I'm John Gadduli from the Hamilton Community Foundation. I'd like to take this opportunity to say welcome back and thank you to one of the most important groups that we have in our city. The Hamilton City School employees make a difference every day in the lives of so many people. We're so appreciative and welcome back for the new year.
I chose Mr. Wilson because he buzzed my hair in class in fourth period for me. And he's just a kind-hearted soul, and he helps everybody out with their work.
Thank you to Ms. Nikolinko, Ms. Nagras, Ms. Cassafelli, and to Ms. Jackie. They make me feel like I'm safe.
I would like to say thank you to the Hamilton staff for being how receptive they are. They're great listeners, and I hope you look forward to your experience here.
The Greater Hamilton Chamber of Commerce is thrilled to welcome you back to school. You have such an important role to shape our future leaders and entrepreneurs to dream big, think boldly, and create fearlessly. Every classroom is a launchpad, and every idea that you ignite has the power to shape the future of our community. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you for all your hard work and helping us be successful. Hope you guys have a fun time with new students.
They teach us how to write, and they learn some numbers and like spill things.
I would have to say my math teachers, Ms. Taylor and Ms. Hayne, because anytime you walk in there, they'll put a smile on your face and let their classroom be really welcoming.
Welcome back to this school year, All You Want to Do Educators. And I'm Sammy Broyles from Miami University. And I just want to take this time to thank you for pouring into all the students this year. All the things that you do as one plant, the other one's water. And it's an increase to our community how you give back. And you never know what that little seed would do to change a student's life by that small word of encouragement. Like Mr. Nichols did to Ty Smallwood, encourage him to be an educator. And now we have a principal now at the high school. Thank you for all that you do.
All the teachers, like in 4th grade, are very sweet and very caring about people. They hope, like, they're understanding. And they understand if you're feeling something, that they're there to help you. And like my teachers and my other teachers, they all come to my softball games and like sports. And they're supportive. And they're, they're just, like, so many things I can't even name.
I choose Mrs. Hendricks, our safety and security monitor, because she's like everybody's school mom and is dead for everyone.
Thank you to all my teachers who I've had in the past to help welcome me into Hamilton as I moved in.
Uh, thank you to all my teachers who believe in me and helped me throughout all my years at Hamilton.
Welcome back, teachers. Thank you for all the fun we're gonna have this year.
On behalf of Seventeen Strong, we welcome you to this exciting new school year, and we wish you much success.
I would like to thanks Ms. Crouch. She is one of my favorite teachers. Love her.
Thank you for all the stuff in Miami students, you know.
Mr. Pay is my favorite because he's somebody that you can really trust and put all of your emotions into.
The thing about a teacher is they are really smart and they teach us things. They like teach us math, how to spell, and how to write, um, really, really good. And I want to say thank you to all the teachers.
Welcome back to school educators. Just know that all the work that you're doing at the school during the school day is reinforced with the work that we do after school at Boys and Girls Club. While we're heading into or continuing to grow our partnership with the school, we're expanding this year to open up a new club at Linden Elementary School, just like we opened up two years ago at Highland Elementary. Just know that all of the great things, all of the learning, is reinforced in the after school. Thanks to our awesome partnership between Boys and Girls Clubs of Hamilton and Hamilton City School District. Good luck and have an amazing school year.
I love Hamilton City School District because Wilson is amazing school and the staff are also helpful to help the students grow.
We love Wilson because our teachers help us win.
We love Wilson because our teachers help us win. We love Wilson because they help us get our education right.
We love Wilson. We love Wilson so much. The teachers are so nice, and they're very helpful whenever you need them. Thank you, Wilson. Welcome back.
Thank you for being our teacher.
Thank you for being good teachers.
We love our teacher at Crawford Woods.
Welcome back.
Thank you for being our teachers.
Thank you for being our teachers.
Thank you for being our teachers.
The first day is so important just so the kids feel reassured, that they know where they're going and that they're supported. If they have a bad first day, it just makes them nervous after that. So we just want to make them feel like they know what they're doing and that people are here to help them.
We're always excited to welcome our Fairwood Falcons back to school. Lots of energy, lots of excited faces. I think we only had two sets of tears.
I think Wilson is special because the staff here is so committed. They're all working together, they're all teaming together. They are ready for these kids, and they're excited to meet them.
We want to continue to be a safe place for them, where they can grow socially, academically, and emotionally. We're here to help grow your kids. If you need anything, give us a call. We're here to support you guys.
Our phrase is here is going to be "Every night, every day" because we are the Wilson Knights. So it's to make every kid feel connected and supported every day.
We love Arrow. Arrow is new this year, but most of the kids were just, you know, full-on smiles, happy to see the dog here. Welcome anytime. We are here to support our kids, to support our staff, and to grow, grow, grow.
Arrow is the Hamilton City School District's first therapy dog. She is certified through the AKC as a certified therapy dog. She is here for our students and our staff and is just a part of our, the Hamilton community.
And I'm just so impressed with her poise. She is so well-trained and just does a great job already to lighten all of our moods. I couldn't be thankful enough to Leadership Hamilton, Hamilton Community Foundation, and the Pauls and Stripes College for preparing such an amazing partner. We couldn't have asked for a better dog.
I know Andrea just saw the benefit and all the research that was behind how therapy dogs make a solid impact with students, you know, through attendance and grades and behavior. And she did a lot of research herself and brought it to the team and wanted to take the project on.
And this is one proactive strategy that local communities are using to help build resilience, kindness, positivity. There's a lot of research out there about how a therapy dog will lower anxiety and stress, which so many of our young people and our staff are facing on a day-to-day basis. Our goal is to get a dog for each of our buildings. As you know, there's a lot of needs that go around, and Arrow is just one. We're a very large district, and so our goal is to onboard four to five dogs a year that would allow us to eventually get there in the next few years to a dog per school. That will allow that dog to become really a part of that school culture. Through community donations, through different agencies, we've been able to raise the money completely so that not one district dollar is being used for this.
She's calm, mild-mannered, just very sweet, very gentle, listens very well. A lot of love, a lot of love, a lot of happiness, a lot of energy behind it, which is great.
Welcome, everybody, to Garfield Middle School. My name is Josh Marjoram. I'm the principal here at Garfield. Tonight, we are here to commemorate a legendary coach, teacher, and family man from the Hamilton community, Coach Tim Reed. I was fortunate, yeah. I was fortunate enough to have played for Coach Reed, as I'm sure many of you in the crowd were. We often talk about how many wins coaches have or how many years they coached, but typically, we don't hear many stories or talk about what really matters, which is the lessons that coaches teach their players that go beyond sports. One thing that sticks out to me that I still bring up to this day is a conversation I had with Coach Reed in high school. He was talking about how important it was that we are good people and not just good players. Of course, he had his own way to explain this. He said, "Marjoram, it's not about the X's and the O's, it's about the Jimmy's and the Joe's." At that time, I just thought that was funny, but I didn't understand what he was really saying. And since then, I've thought a lot about that frequently in my day-to-day work. Without a good group of people around me to support me, I would not have been as successful in life. The people we have in our team and life are the most important teammates we will have. Coach Reed was not just a great coach, but a great person. I'm sure many of us in this room are glad he was on our team. I would now like to welcome up our next speaker to the podium. Please help me give a warm welcome to Coach Reed's son, Jimmy Reed.
Good evening, everyone. First off, I'd like to thank everyone for coming on behalf of my family. My mother, Diane Reed, my sister Shannon Reed, my grandma Willa Reed, my uncle Wes Reed. It is incredible seeing everyone come together to celebrate this special moment. As many of you already know, our dad was a very humble man, and he would have a hard time accepting all of this being done on his behalf. Dad spent 32 years teaching, and his efforts have made a lasting impact on many lives. This was very apparent without pouring of love from the community since his passing. He left his mark on many people's hearts, and we are all better for knowing Tim Reed. Our family would like to thank Josh Marjoram and the principal here at Garfield and the Board of Education for making all of this possible. Also, we would like to thank the community for keeping his memory alive and sharing with us the impact that he left on the hearts of everyone that came into contact with him. He is truly missed. I was going through some pictures the other day, and I came across some statements made about my father I'd like to share with you. A quote from Walter Vickers. "I started teaching at Garfield in the 1985 along with Tim. We coached basketball together the years I was in Hamilton. Like everyone who knew Tim in any manner, I was immediately impressed by his kindness, calmness, and genuine care for all people. Tim was a treasure for all students he served at Hamilton. I know that words cannot express how good things about my father and that... I know that words cannot express good things about my father and that left... Sorry, guys. Okay. I know that words cannot express good things about my father and that the life he led. We pray that future scholars and student athletes see his name on the court and become curious and inspired. I know I may be biased, but my dad was a pretty awesome guy. This floor dedication truly gives him the recognition that he deserves. His incredible legacy will live on with this floor dedication and the Tim Reed Scholarship that has been made in his memory." Can the board members please stand up? On of the scholarship legacy fund? You guys, you guys do an awesome job with everything you do. As many of you know, there is a legacy fund created in Dad's memory. Since 2019, the Coach Tim Reed Legacy Fund has provided over 35 scholarships to college-bound seniors from Talawanda High School and Hamilton High School. Coach Reed exemplified the traits associated with outstanding teacher and coach. Honesty, integrity, loyalty, respectfulness, responsibility, humility, compassion, and fairness were all strong principles and core values that Coach Reed modeled daily when interacting with his students, coworkers, players, and people. Our hope is that the floor dedication reaches the community of Hamilton and inspires the young students. His legacy will live on for many years to come, and we are very appreciative of everyone that made this happen. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to bring up Ms. Diane Reed and also Coach Reed's mother, and also city council member Tim Nab, for a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We would like to welcome you for the first time to Coach Reed Court.
All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. It is 6:40. Roll call, please.
Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. Kopus?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion to approve the board agenda with any modifications.
I'd like to make a motion to remove Kim Davidson from the, from the Human Resources section of the, the agenda because we won't have a quorum if Mr. Davidson is not allowed to vote.
I second the motion.
All in favor? Roll call.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes from the previous meetings?
So moved.
I second.
Roll call.
Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Public participation, I got no forms, and nobody looks like they're here to participate. So we'll move on to superintendents.
Katie, are you sure you don't want to talk? Okay. Yes, thank you, Vice President Davidson. I just have a few comments for the board this evening. One, I just want to congratulate our district on a great week last week with all of our homecoming festivities. The parade was great to see all of our schools and athletes and performers coming out. I also want to give a massive shout-out to our administrators for that, for that week. That week is crazy. It is a week of spirit weeks and lots of excitement and energy, and they did a nice job. I also had the privilege last week of hosting this year's Civics Day participants here at the board office. They also went and visited our buildings. And I will tell you, the future is bright with the young leaders that were here that day. So we will be able to celebrate their experiences in November, but I just want to thank them for their time and their thoughtful questions about what a school board member and superintendent does. To all of our families, I want to, this is crazy to say out loud, but it is the end of first quarter on Thursday, October 9th, just two weeks away. We are, we are there, and I don't know how that happened. Because it's the end of the quarter, there will be no school for students on Friday, October 10th, for Teacher Records Day. And then we will take a two-day break on Monday, the 13th, and Tuesday, October 14th, for our fall break observation. As the end of the quarter draws near, I just want to remind our families that this is a great time to connect with your child and your child's teacher, to understand their progress and performance so far. We have many conference nights going on throughout the district over these next few weeks. But whether they have signed up for a conference, or it's a simple phone call or email, I just encourage our parents to check in to see where their progress is this quarter to help determine ways that we can work together to help all kids succeed. And then this evening on the agenda, each of you have received the attachment for the items that we'll be voting on. You know, we've got quite a few opportunities for kids for after-school tutoring that's listed on this agenda and some other pieces there. So those are my comments this evening.
Thank you. Move on to Human Resources. Item one is personnel items. I believe everyone's received the information on this. So I'd entertain a motion to accept...
So moved.
I second.
Any discussion? Ain't none. Roll call.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Move on to the next item on Human Resources, a termination resolution. I believe everybody's been given a copy of the resolution. Are there any questions about that? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
I second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ain't none, or roll call.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
And we'll move on to the consent agenda. As Mrs. Blevins has indicated, we all got a summary of those items. We've all had a chance over the last week to, to review those items in depth. For sake of brevity, we're putting it on a consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion to accept it.
So moved.
I second.
I was waiting for Joe.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a comment, Mr. Davidson. Under the Curriculum and Instruction section, I just want to express an opinion here. I know that the staff is being compensated for this, but the after-school tutoring programs at the main campus in Garfield, I think that's absolutely wonderful that our staff is willing to extend already long days for the benefit of our student, or our students. And I neglected to mention the English Language Learners Program at Crawford Woods, Fairwood, and at Linden and Riverview. So I just personally want to say, and I think I speak for the board, thank you so much to those staff members that are willing to do that.
Any other comments?
Well, Joe, to go along with that, the, when I look at taking eighth graders to Washington, DC, I want to really thank those staff members. I've done that, and I know what that's like. And I think that's a one, quite, in all seriousness, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us, our students, to see the nation's capital. It's an incredible experience for those kids and one I'm sure they'll never forget. But a big thank you for those teachers who have to sit on those buses for hours on end.
And what's nice about it, they're going, and it's not a general fund expense.
Yeah, yeah.
It's self, self-paid.
Yeah.
Which gets me to my point. We've taught to Mrs. Blevins and a couple of other of the members. On our agenda tonight, there were, there's two items for two students with special needs that the district is paying close to $82,000 just for those two students. That is not state reimbursed. We get $8,000 from the state per student, but we're required to make up the difference. And I have no problems with it. The students need that. But I'm just wanting to point out to everybody that the parochial schools don't have to take these students, aren't required to provide these services. The private schools, all these schools that are getting the vouchers, the state money, taxpayer money, aren't required to do what we're doing, and we're not getting reimbursed for it, even though we're required.
I agree. Mr. Davidson, I know a lot of people won't like to hear what you just said, but everything you said is exactly the truth, and they need to hear it. So I'm, I thank you for stating that.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Kopus?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
All right, I think that brings us to the finance agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. We have a lengthy finance agenda this evening. We have the normal treasure reports. We also have an additional report this evening. It's the investment report that I had sent out earlier in the week. The investment report details the balance, the type, the maturity, and the yield of our investments. And it also details our asset allocation of those investments, whether it's municipal bonds, or US treasuries, or CDs, or commercial paper, or money market funds. That report is now out there for you to approve and for folks to look at. So that's a new report to keep an eye on. We have the permanent appropriations, so the final budget. You'll remember in June, we passed the temporary budget, which we do every year. And then the state requires us to pass our final budget by September. So that is on there up for your approval. We have two confirming requisitions. And then something that I would like to highlight is on the screen, we have donations to the district.
That's amazing.
Just look at the list that we have. I mean, almost $45,000 in cash and in-kind donations. And I always like to, you know, call attention to that, especially when we have a large list or particularly large donations. It's just... It's just really great to see folks in the community support the school district. So, I wanted to call attention to that, and those are my items this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? I'd entertain a motion to accept his report.
So moved.
I second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Copus?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
All right, our next meeting will be October 9th, 4 o'clock, same place. We will have a work session, executive session, and a business meeting.
No business.
No business. Just work and executive. All right. Somebody move to adjourn?
So moved.
I second.
We are adjourned.